Charlotte Douglas, City Commissioner.
Joseph Murphy, Director of Planning.
Josh Markham, City Attorney's Office.
Meg Truba, Economic Development.
Mike Fournier, Mayor.
And once again, Woody Gantina, Acting Assistant Chair tonight. First item of business is approval of the October 14th meeting minutes. Hopefully, everyone got a chance to read them.
One each, we can't do...
What?
One, two, three, four. Oh, yeah, we can't, I'm sorry, I'm wrong.
Sure. It was the whole basis of our discussion. All right, so yeah, approval of the October 14th, 2025 minutes. Any questions, revisions, concerns, motions?
Motion to approve?
Move to approve by Mr. Cooper, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Douglas. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, minutes approved. Next item of business is public comment. Obviously, we value everyone from the public's opinion. Now is your time to come up and speak about non-agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on a non-agenda item this evening? Oh, Mr. Erickson, go ahead.
I don't know whether this is considered non-agenda, but I don't think I'll have the opportunity during the agenda. Bill Harrison, Woodward Side subdivision, also a downtown property owner. Regarding the adult-oriented businesses downtown, as far as I'm concerned, you need to prohibit any business that will contribute to the downgrading of downtown. We have already allowed tattoo parlors due to the popularity of tattoos within the general public. The number of tattoo parlors should be limited, just as we initially did with the bars downtown when they started coming in in droves. Microblading should be limited to being associated with hair salons. Prohibit pawn shops, marijuana distributors, and adult bookstores. Now, this one may be controversial, but prohibit storefront churches. Almost 30 years ago, I had someone approach me for one of my buildings to put in a storefront church with the intent to proselytize young people attending the bars in downtown Royal Oak. I didn't think that was a good idea, I didn't think it was good for business. Maintain the current separation distances and state licensing requirements. The separation distances were very helpful for us when we were able to thwart a pawn shop that wanted to be located at Webster and Woodward, right at the corner of our subdivision. Now, as far as single-family housing size is concerned, I agree that there should not be a uniform arbitrary maximum floor area for single-family zones. I've always felt that that 3,500 square foot limit was really unconstitutional. There should be some criteria for maximum home size as a function of lot size in order to avoid overcrowding while allowing larger homes in large lot areas. The applicant for the new home on Hendry Boulevard was recently denied a variance for a 4,000 square foot home on a large lot in the neighborhood adjacent to the Presbyterian Church. And that neighborhood includes homes having 4,000 to 7,000 square feet. It was ridiculous. The replacement of existing homes with new builds results in increasing the vitality of the city. Just give me a little essence. Economics necessitates replacing smaller homes with larger homes. The rule of thumb is that the cost of land should not exceed 15% of the total cost.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak, public comment? Going once, going twice, all right, we're gonna have a close...
Public comment. Next item on the agenda is...
Pardon me, next item on the agenda? New business, public area and conditional rezoning from neighborhood business to multifamily residential and a site plan, SP 25-11-12, 1225 North Main Street. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Murphy.
So this site's located on North Main Street on the west side between 12 Mile and Catalpa. It's across the street from the cemetery, and it has an alley along its western boundary line. It's in the neighborhood business zoning district, and the current use is an existing self-serve auto wash, which is a non-conforming use. The petitioner proposes to demolish that existing business and to construct a two-story, 10-unit, multi-dwelling apartment building. The current zoning, which again is neighborhood business, does allow for residential, a residential element. They must, residence, residential units must be on upper floors. The ground floor must be some type of permitted or special land use, like a restaurant, office, retail, a wide variety of uses, but they must be on upper floors. And so their proposal does not contain any commercial or professional office component, strictly residential. So in order to achieve their development, they're requesting a conditional rezoning to multiple, to rezone the property to multiple family residential to allow for their development. When we refer to the future land use map in the master plan, it shows this particular property as a designation of neighborhood Main Street. So it has a future land use designation, and as you very well know, we've not yet translated that into a new zoning ordinance and a new zoning district, or different district with different uses and development regulations. But I'll simply refer to the fact that it does have a land use, future land use designation of neighborhood Main Street, and there's a description of the intent of that future land use designation in the report. So they're seeking to have the property conditionally rezoned again to multiple family residential, and they're offering, voluntarily offering in city, to the city in writing, certain conditions of their approval that are, again, voluntary in nature. I'm gonna jump to the table that's in the report, because I think it highlights some of the deviations very well from... So when, when we take their requested zoning designation, the multifamily residential, we compare their proposal to the regu, land use regulations in the multifamily residential zoning district. They certainly meet many of them, they have deviations from others. So the table highlights all of the deviations. I'll point out some notable deviations in that the multifamily residential zoning district allows for a certain number of dwellings depending on the lot's size. This particular, based on the lot's size, the multifamily regulations would allow for three dwellings. They're proposing, again, 10, so deviation from the allowable number of units. The setbacks are set at 25 feet. We'll look at their drawings to note that their building, and I'll hover over their building on the screen, has no north and no south setback. It has about a 6'4" setback off of the right-of-way along Main Street, and it has a setback of about 31 feet along the alley. That provides access to the parking, surface parking spaces for the 10 units. There are 15 parking spaces provided. The multiple-family residential zoning district requires two parking spaces per unit. They're proposing the equivalent of one and a half parking spaces per unit. Very similar in nature to what market forces, which we've demonstrated to you in recent memorandums, what market forces seem to be dictating. But our ordinance requirement is two. They provided for landscaping on the site at the northwest corner, adjacent to their transformer pad and their refuse enclosure, and they have some minimal landscaping between the front entry and the sidewalk along, along Main Street. So the planning commission is being asked to make a recommendation of approval or denial, and since this is a change, request to change to the map in the zoning ordinance, it needs to be approved by the city commission on two readings of the ordinance. So again, you're making a recommendation that will be forwarded to the city commission based on the site plan that's shown and the voluntary conditions that are offered by the petitioner, which have been noted in an attachment that you've been provided as part of your packet. The petitioner did provide a letter indicating how they believe that their project is consistent with the master plan, how it meets the intent of the land use objective, future land use objective, and the conditions that they believe are of community benefit to the city to grant the, their request for a, for conditional rezoning. So I'll let the petitioner go into their site plan and their proposal in greater details, but I'll answer any questions that you may have before we turn it over to them and then ultimately to public here.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Any questions for staff? I've got a quick question. With respect to the site plan and the two existing curb cuts that are there, just for clarification, those are, there's a being filled in, but those are not necessarily added to the calculation for green space, correct?
Yes, that's correct, since it's in the public right-of-way. The, all of their parking spaces will be accessed from the public alley. And staff doesn't, zoning ordinance allows for a multifamily development, a maximum driveway with 30 feet at the property line. We don't distinguish whether that's on a primary street, or roadway, or boulevard, or a public alley. So you'll see that their parking spaces are accessed off of the public alley via essentially one continuous wide curb cut. So we recognize that in the deviations on the chart in the report, and it would be recognized in their conditional rezoning agreement. But you're correct in that they're removing two drive approaches in the public right-of-way to restore green space.
Great, thank you. Any, any other questions? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and invite the applicant and their team up to present the project.
Good evening, I'm Dennis Cowan, and I'm here representing 1225 Flats, which owns the property at 1225 North Main, which is the topic tonight. This is a very modest project. It's 10 townhomes. But I think it's very significant for that area because it's, I think, not been identified as a neighborhood note in the new master plan, but it hasn't had any new construction, by my research, in nearly 40 years. I think the Morissette Muffler Shop next door is the newest construction that's been on that strip from Crooks all the way up to 12 Mile. So this is an area that, even though there's been some really good attempts at rehabbing the buildings in the area, and there's some very stable businesses such as the Vet Clinic, which has been there for a long time, and I've made several trips there myself, it is an area that could use some new development. And there's no property in that strip that needs it more than this one, because what we have is an outdated and unsightly self-serve auto wash. I think it's the last one left in town. And I did mention this to someone, and they said to me, "Well, where am I gonna get my car washed?" And I said, "There's plenty of new places to go to, I don't think we'll miss this one." So we have chosen the conditional rezoning route because, as Mr. Murphy referenced, and I'll call it something different, we're in the planning and zoning twilight zone. We have a new master plan and the current zoning ordinance, so we kinda have to kinda mesh through the two. So as was pointed out, this is in a neighborhood, new neighborhood category. But if you look at the map very closely, this block's in purple, there's two blocks in purple, and then all the next three, four blocks are all neighborhood edge. And we fit very, very nicely into that category because that looks at multifamily of, in buildings of two to three stories, encourages and mentions townhomes, which is what this project is, and then also bringing the building to the front and having the parking in the rear. I think most of the deviations, and Jeff and Jason can touch on this, most of the deviations that are present are, I think, the result of us being in this twilight zone, because once I think the zoning ordinance is updated, given what's trying to be accomplished, I think many of these deviations would not exist and would not be before you this evening. But under the current zoning ordinance, they are. So we're, we think this is also a project that's consistent with other properties on Main Street north of 11 to 12. I think in the last 20 years, we've had seven multifamily projects. Some are very significant, such as the new Jonah project, Billings Place, and then the building across the street that has Sola on the main floor. You go further up, and most recently, we've had Bianchi Flats and the building right to the north, both of those buildings being at the intersection of Main Street and Austin. So this is very consistent, and in the immediate area, there has been multifamily for many, many years, right to the west, directly to the west, and then across the street on Crooks. So having multifamily in this area will not be anything new, it's already been introduced. So that, I just wanted to give you some of the background on why we chose conditional rezoning as the path, and we did put in writing the voluntary benefits that we are offering. I would mention that under the ordinance, because the current zoning doesn't allow what we want to do, that all of these are, would be considered to be material benefits to the city because they can't otherwise exist. And I think we would all agree that this project would be immensely better than what is there now. So with that, I am gonna conclude my remarks, and then I'm gonna have Jason and Jeff come up and describe the particulars.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody, Jason Krieger with Krieger Cloud Architects. Actually, I guess it's more Jason than Jeff, because we're here on our own behalf tonight. We're gonna sort of JV this presentation, so if I forget something, jump in, you know. This is very brief, because you guys have heard a lot about this site already tonight. But I think it's important for us to get just some context and some thinking of how we ended up where we did, because it's easy to kind of assume how you would get here, but... So Jeff and I, very briefly, we have a couple slides showing some things that we've done over the years, which I think a lot of you hopefully have seen or driven by. But we prefer sites that are, I would say, opportunity sites or challenging sites. This, this right here was from way back, I was a kid, 2009 or something like that. Bought it, rehabbed it, we did, and I grew that, that was our first architecture firm. By the way, I've owned rental properties personally in Ferndale for 25 years, something like that. And so we have a history of owning, renting, and developing properties. And our specialty is really boutique style, like smaller things you can kind of get your arms around, things that most developers wouldn't really go after because it's not big enough, but we can handle it or deal with it, and we enjoy it. It's kind of a passion project for us, and it's something we can get to our kids one day. This is our last office we were at, you can see on the upper right, it was something you would walk by. And literally, I was walking by it, or riding my bike, or something like that one day, and my wife, I'm like, "Who the hell, who is this?" My wife found who it was, we bought it, and then we turned it into our last office. And that was when we had about maybe 20, 22 people, something like that, we outgrew it. And then this is where we are today. This is a much larger development, it goes all the way back. We have our, our, our development in the front, you see on the left, that's what we, where we bought it. And both of those last projects were struggling, nothing was happening for quite some time. And so we figured out how to do it. Now, right now, currently, we're almost done, hopefully the next month or two, with a few apartments behind us, which we got approval from you guys, it's been a while, four months ago, something like that. And then we're hoping to do more next year, so we'll hopefully be back. But the whole point of that is not to brag, we're just saying that we have the chops, we can do these deals. So we were looking for the next project, really, and we came across this, this car wash. And John Jansanian, I believe, Jensen, he's your neighbor. And he was actually my neighbor for a while at 1412, I've known John for a long time, he's a really great guy. He's getting out of the business. And this has been for sale for a couple of years, and he's sold his other two developments over the years. And funny enough, we worked on one of them, that's where Elevate is today. And so we struck a deal, and when we were looking at it, we were seeing to ourselves, you know, "What can you do if the, if the number's right?" And multifamily came up, and a lot of it, the reason why is because it's, there's a need for it. And it seems like a good site. It's not, I don't think it's a good site for retail. You know, you have the cemetery across the street, and people say different things about the cemetery across the street, I think it's fine. But the other thing is, you're on a weird, unique block where from, was it, Yarborough, what's the street? Above Yarborough, is that the street, or is it there? What's that?
Woodborough.
Woodborough, yeah. To, to the Crooks and Main Street, those are 80-foot lots, so they're very skinny. The only, the reason why those current businesses can operate there is because they have adjacent lots with parking. And this thing is kind of landbanked, right? So it's a very, very difficult site. That's probably why it's been for sale for almost two years. And we looked at it different ways. We'd like to try and do a podium, which means you park beneath the building. That didn't pencil out at all. So then we looked at doing flats, and it was way better than what we currently have proposed. The problem is, the flats were very, like meh, you know, we like things that, we want people, we want to be excited, we want to hang onto it for a long time. We're not merchant builders, and we're not builders, we're just, we do this because we love it, and we love this town, for real. And so we're like, "What do we do to make this great?" And so that, we came up with this concept of the townhome concept, where everyone has their own townhome, there's nobody above or below you. And we went from 15 down to 10 units, and it's just really nice. And then we have rooftop patios planned, so far, everything's looking okay, which is great. And so that's the direction that we're going with this particular development. We have this slide here, which just sort of shows you what's around it. It's actually a great location, we have multifamily to the west. We have even further north than that, we have, you know, restaurants, further south, we all know those restaurants, there's markets, everything. There's a public parking lot to the south, right behind you, Exercise and those businesses. And I drive by there literally five times a week, it's never full. So to me, they'd be like, if they were like long-term guests, whatever, they could stay there. I believe the parking meters are 12 hours, so it's just a, it's a great convenience spot. This is a really unique spot too, because, in my opinion, because you're landlocked. So every other company we've owned, we've had side streets of companies, or I'm sorry, side streets of like, just neighborhoods where you could park out. And I know that people didn't like it, when we were at 1412, we had 1,500 square feet, and I think we had almost 20 people in there, and people just parked in the neighborhood. And Jim Ellison would get calls from people all the time, you know, complaining, and I get it. But he would just say, "You're allowed to park there." This is different. There is a single-family neighborhood to the north, but it's not, it's not convenient. You can't get there through the alleyway, so I think they're safe, they're protected. There are apartments to the west, but, so we're like, "We don't want people to park there." So we want to make sure we had enough. So that's part of the reason why we downsized it from 15, that was way better, down to 10. But in order to go there, you have to be at market rate, you have to be as big as you can, period. That's just financials. So that's how we got to where we are. And so, oh, existing contents, keep going. This is the site today. You know, the alleys, you know, obviously dilapidated, we would have to improve that because we'd be tapping into it. The building hasn't been really touched in a long time, I mean, John's on his retirement phase, so he's, you know, he's like, doesn't care about it. But if you keep going through there, you know, you can see that's the site. So basically, it's, and this type of building is obsolete, completely functionally obsolete. This is, you know, everyone goes to Jack's or a car wash or whatever, so this is pretty, I've been through here at least two dozen times, I think I've seen only a couple of cars. That could be different times, whatever. But the thing that we like about it is that the use that we're proposing should be way easier, simpler, calmer than a car wash with vacuums and things like that. So we did a really quick study, take this with a grain of salt. This is if you did it with today's standards, right? There's a setback from the rear, rear, from the alleyway, a rear setback of 25 feet. And then if you were to drive in today as the curb cuts are, basically, you'd end up with like a 17-foot wide building, you know, because you have to still park. The one on the right, if you came in and parked behind it with, using the alley, it's a bigger building, but when you look at the requirements for retail and office, you're 2,400 to 2,250 square feet for a building. Basically, it's not buildable unless you're a owner-occupied building. You'd have to own it to occupy it. And I gotta tell you, 10, even if you got 12 parking spaces out of that, it's not gonna work, not there. So we feel that the best use is what we're proposing, and here's why. We can control the parking, we can control who's coming in, and it's a, it's a very quiet, simple use. It's something that, it's something that, you know, it's not big influxes of anything, it's just a very simple apartment building, and that, that's the concept. So with this picture here, you know, we have EV charging stations, we're gonna get rid of the curb cuts, we're gonna propose more greenery, I get we can't count it, but still, we'll do that, we did that 2021. We planted street trees, we use worry-free, that they are our landscapers, they're landscapers for the downtown, so they know the city very well. And they work with the arborists, we planted trees all on 2020. And, you know, we're going to, you know, basically improve the site. But in order to do it, we need a certain density, and I'm not saying that we need, but we do. And so that's it. If you go to the next slide? So part of our gives, and this wasn't in the initial letter, and we did some research between that and now, but our proposal is to provide in the green permeable pavers in, at the patios and in the parking area. So we've been speaking with Unilock, Unilock, right, yeah, Unilock. And they have systems that do that where it doesn't need to tap into the underground storm system, it'll permeate through. We still have some testing to do, but I'll tell you this, I've been working in Royal Oak for 25 years at least, it's sand, and which is exactly what we want. So we could do, you know, 12 to 18 inches of sand, crushed concrete, you won't need to tap into anything. And so that's something that would not impact our infrastructure, right? And we'd do it for both the parking and the patios. It's about $100, $150,000 checked all right, but, you know, we're trying to make a deal with you guys, so that's what we're doing. Plus, we're getting rid of the curb cuts on Main Street, we should add more grass. Landscape plan, not much landscaping, but, but we would, we would improve it, you know, and do what we can. Right now, there's basically, you know, nothing, it's all asphalt. I mean, we're adding, for what it's worth, we're adding 627 square feet. The green space, and the right-of-way, what we was talking about, we're, the delta, 670 square feet. And the permeable pavers is 300, or, yeah, 3,000 square feet, so, you know. Next slide, please? So this was an item that came up in the write-up from staff, and it was the length of the driveway, because that's, you know, the whole length of the site, because we're just parking in there. Number one, that's how a lot of buildings park in Royal Oak, because there's alleyways. If you look to the upper right on that image, you'll see cars parking there at apartments. And then if you see to the left, there's Billings Place, they're parking in garages, right? That's what alleyways, in our opinion, are meant for, it's a, it's an urbanist approach, it's meant for trash, parking, you know, you're keeping that activity there. So we feel like we're following that. The other thing that we like is that we're limiting curb cuts, and we're really promoting, you know, what's nice from the sidewalk, what's nice for me to drive by. And so this is an example, and this has been working. I mean, we're working with these guys right now, and we talk to them all the time about their building, and there's no problems, there's not like accidents in the alleyway or anything like that, so. There's not like accidents in the alleyway or anything like that, so. This is just for fun, Jeff and I popped in there. Walkability, pretty walkable, there's shops all over the place, you got the market, kitty corner, you have bread, you have all this sorts of stuff. So it's a great spot for folks to live, walk, bike, you can walk into town, it says in seventeen minutes, bike in five, drive in three, so, you know, we think it's a great spot. Keep going. Matthew, Jeff?
Thanks, thanks for your time again, appreciate it, Jason, a dentist to the heavy lifting, I can at least walk you through the plans and the exterior. So from a plant standpoint, it's pretty straightforward, as you can see, the building's roughly one sixty by maybe forty-seven feet in the east-west direction, it's really ten two-story units with a small rooftop component. So, the, the green represents one-bedroom units, and the purple represents two-bedroom units. So again, pretty straightforward, the ground level will be the primary living spaces, kitchen, great room, powder room, mud area, things like that. And the second floor will be the bedroom units. And then again, I mentioned on the right-hand side, that would be the upper level, so about half that rooftop area, the eastern portion will be a, you know, a small area that you'd walk up to from the staircase, and then the small outdoor patio. So again, just something unique for the development, that's not common in most developments around town. Again, exterior, well, I want to apologize for this, so we were super meticulous today, combing through these slides, crossing the Ts, dotting the Is, and of course, we missed the one that I have to present, so we could skip over this and just jump to the elevation, so. So again, these are renderings, they may not have been in your initial packet, but this really represents what the building will look like. So again, it's pretty straightforward, it's, you know, very modern from an aesthetic standpoint, but also timeless from material and massing standpoint as well. So, high-quality materials, it's primarily a brick facade, we do have some hardy lap siding between the brick components, and then glazing, of course, too. So a nice, simple, elegant rhythm along Main Street. And you'll see, see as well, we activated the main floor with sliding doors that lead out to a private patio space. Nice garden wall right there with landscape up front, is part of that green component. So again, I think it'll add to the pedestrian, you know, appeal and usability of the building. And this is the alley side, so this will be looking east. So again, we have continued the masonry belt around the first floor, you can see small canopies over the primary entry pieces, and then we have a hardy siding up above, the cementitious siding. So, yeah, the, the primary entry will be at the rear of the building in the alley, and then, but we also, it has the, I guess, the appearance of a front door with the sliding doors along Main Street. Aerial view, showing how the building fits in nicely with our neighbor to the, to the north, the Morissette Auto, and then we have the, the neighboring building to the south as well, too. So I think it fits in well, from a height standpoint, massing standpoint, hugs the streetscape, so I think it fits in well. These are just some interior views, it's not fully designed yet, but it gives you an idea of what the inside will look like, simple materials, again, modern. Yeah, one-bedroom loft, see the loft space above, and this would be the, you know, the main, main floor living space, looking out to that, looking out to Main Street and the patio area. And with that, we can answer any questions that you have, thank you.
All right, thank you, I'll bring it back to this side, Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, I, I read in here, but it's not in the table, Mr. Murphy, there was an issue with a, a corner, a ten-foot setback on a corner, where, where is that?
We'll show it on their drawings. So this drawing illustrates parking space that they highlighted as, where it says fifteen. That particular parking space, there is an adjacent refuse enclosure, which is six feet high, six-foot-high masonry. And so, that space needs to have a ten-foot clearance triangle, so that someone backing out might be able, would be able to see someone driving down the alley. And the presence of that enclosure is within that triangular area. So obviously, they've cited for a generator, backup generator, and the necessary refuse enclosure, they really don't have anywhere to squeeze it further back, so to speak, so that they can have the distance for ten feet, but they, they have some amount of distance, once the gates are closed, there is a certain amount of distance, I don't know quite what that is, but it's, it's, the, a portion of the refuse enclosure is within the distance requirement of that triangular area.
We can, we can rotate that, I don't have the dimensions offhand, but I think we could easily rotate that to cut that down, I don't know how much, though, without actually drafting it.
So what happens at, behind Morissette, anything? I mean, do they, are there, do people come in and out of the alley because they're going to a rear entrance at Morissette? I mean, what kind of traffic do we anticipate there? Look at my map and see.
Right there? Yeah, the only, the only activity that I, I've seen is, is the parking.
If I could, Morissette has a ton of parking, they have a whole extra lot to the north. So I don't think there's any Morissette traffic, I think the only traffic coming through there would either be, you know, utility trucks, the garbage truck, or the cars that park on that lot, or park on, on either side of the alley, I mean, okay?
Yeah, okay, thanks, that's for now, for.
Any other questions down here? I have a question sort of related to that, can you help me understand how that same condition or issue doesn't exist at the south of the alley? Is it because of the building that exists there sort of absolves them from that, and the Morissette building is sort of positioned a little bit differently? Or why is that the same issue not present at both the north and south ends of that alley?
Let me bring that up on the screen.
That, that building, if you go in the aerial, I think that was, I think, yeah, I think you guys are right, Joseph, that building was actually drawn, it should be over, that was drawn wrong, if you like an aerial. I think there's more room there, you guys caught that on your aerial. See, yeah.
I see.
Yeah, yeah, Doug, Doug had just caught that.
Which, that essentially clears up that site triangle issue on the south side?
He picked up the one, yeah, yeah.
Did I hear you say you're gonna repave that portion of the alley?
Yes, we have to, because we're accessing it, meaning we're tapping it, so we have to do that, at least our portion.
Yeah, I got it, okay.
Mr. Cooper?
Just back in specifics of the repaving, is that just a mill and cap, is that gonna be replacing with new subbase and base course, wear course, or?
But it's a good port, that's a good question, I just know repaving, I was talking to my civil engineer, but I would think that we have to redo it per city standards. Yeah, that's a good question, I don't know, I couldn't give you the technical definition of that, but.
Just guessing, because you're gonna be tapping into it, it's gonna be ripped up, and patches never hold up for duration, so.
Yeah, I would think like at least four inches would come off and then repave it, basically.
So probably a new subbase and then, okay.
That's right, yeah.
Anyone else? I have a whole list of questions, that's why I'm making sure everyone else gets their opportunity to speak first. All right, I'm gonna fire them away then. So this is a lot line, a lot line, proposed building, did you reach out to the neighbors to the north and the south just to let them know that your new design was gonna be sort of right up against their buildings?
The north, no, and the reason why is, you know, we messed up, we just forgot, I'll be honest with you, I can't lie to you guys. The south, yes, he's our client, so he knows.
Okay. Next question is about the, there was mention of bike racks being installed, I did not see where those were located on the plan, or where they're going to be located.
Well, good question, again, we're gonna put them in the back somewhere, but I don't know if those were located, but we are gonna put them out there, we have to.
Would they potentially be taking up a parking space?
No, 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 we'll find a spot where we can put them, so, yeah, we will locate them, because you have to these days, we have them every place we have, so it's just a matter of finding a spot.
And just to be clear, those are racks, not lockers, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
They're loops, you put them in, yeah.
All right, next question is on the EV chargers, really, first one is why only four chargers? And then you, where you're showing them located, I guess why, I don't know, I'm not sure if that's indicative of the actual location, or just representing that you'll have them. So why then, why that number, where are they gonna be located? And sort of related to that, the parking that's here, will it be assigned, or is it sort of just open for residents?
You know, we haven't really gotten to the assigned or open yet, that's for sure, however, if somebody has an EV, then they're gonna get that spot. As far as where it's located, we haven't really discussed it yet, have we? I'm pointing to you, because you're the one that's.
And we also spoke about two we can prep for all of them, but right now, we're planning for four.
Okay. Yeah, because we really make questions around why not provide either the charger or prep for each of the units, also have the spaces assigned. But also, if you are gonna have a limited number of chargers, I would suggest locating at least one of the pedestals near the disabled spot. Just pragmatism. All right, yeah, I definitely would encourage you to at least put the infrastructure in for additional chargers, certainly could be an amenity that you're able to offer to potential tenants. Because a limited number of chargers, we're gonna be having more and more tenants having EVs, you're probably gonna end up with some, some conflict.
We'll plan for that.
It's not exactly an amenities requirement, like, so we're doing, again, some, a few apartments at our current place, every one of them has EV, because.
True.
You never know.
As of today, we don't have the requirement, but just.
No, no, I get that, but we see it as a requirement, so we're gonna make sure it's all prepped, and we might only put in like four, well, per thing, four. And then, you know, we'll go from there, and if you have to expand, expand it, that's all there is.
The electrical service will accommodate the future needs.
Right, yeah, exactly.
All right, next question then, as far as you're aware, this is not a brownfield site, no contamination issues that we should be concerned with in terms of the car wash?
So, our phase, our phase two was supposed to come in today, it didn't, but there is concern because of the automotive shop next door.
Got it, okay.
And they did their testing, but I haven't seen it yet, so, you know, that's all, yeah.
As of what you know right now, no brownfield issues, okay. Getting back to the dumpster enclosure for a second, so that's a dumpster enclosure, traditional trash pickup with the truck. I don't, it's not necessarily clear what sort of recycling options or facilities are available for the residents, can you expand on that a little?
Yeah, that's a great point, because we would need the bins for that. I mean, is a, is a trash enclosure required for the ordinance, or could we look at bins for trash, bins for recycle? I know we looked at it from another smaller development at Campbell, that's never built, never came to fruition, we looked at a different assembly for that. We had trash bins and an enclosure that they could be wheeled out to the street, but is it, Joseph, do you know offhand, is the trash enclosure required? Well, we'd have to accommodate some bins, maybe there'd be two bins in that, maybe we could do a bigger pen and have the trash enclosure, and then an opening to allow maybe the wheel containers to come out for recycle.
Yeah, I mean, again, we're, we're not here to design the building for you, I just wanted to raise that concern that I had, in the sense that I'm certainly not, speaking personally, in favor of having a series of bins, you know, be exposed for the residents, but obviously, we need to make sure that we're accounting for their, their ability to recycle somehow. Trash, we seem to have covered, you might be, need to move that a little bit, but just wanted to raise the issue that you might have to accommodate that somehow.
That's a good point, even at our building over on four hundred, we have, you know, our office, which is about six thousand square feet, give or take, with a tenant space, and we have two recycle bins in the back that are communal, that are wheeled out, that we wheel them out every, every Wednesday. So something like that could work for a smaller development like this, with residential use.
All right, next question then is on the permeable pavers in, in the parking area. Do you happen to know what the percentage of free area for, for those are, and I'm, you may not have chosen a product yet, so you might not have an answer, but just curious. That's a square footage, but do you know the percentage free area of the, the pavers? Like a certain amount of it, I think, let's stuff through, okay. Then, question about the roof itself, I noticed you have the rooftop patios, basically, half of the roof is, is not necessarily patio area. Have you given any consideration to, if not the whole thing, certainly, elements of that roof area being green roof, or in some way, facilitating residents' ability to have a small garden or something on that roof, separate from the patio that you've already identified?
We, we have not, we do have air conditioning, condensing units that are up on that area too, that will need service from time to time, so we need walkways to get to those. But I think we looked at, we've, we've done many, several developments in town, Gatsby Cannabis, other, other buildings like that, that we had the full green infrastructure, or the green tray-bound systems of all the photovoltaics. I think just that limited area, I don't know about the payoff, the payback with that, it's just a small area, it's not really contiguous, we're broken up with, with condensing units, the staircases that go up. I don't think we'd have the return with the green and/or photovoltaics.
So you kind of touched on what my next question is, which is essentially the way this building is designed, it's a, it's a great building from an energy efficiency perspective, you know, one big box. You, you mentioned the, the AC condensers that are gonna be on the roof, I don't know if it's designed this way or not, but I'm gonna assume, as most modern apartment buildings are, that it's designed as an all-electric building. I would highly encourage you to explore the, the use of heat pumps as the heating and cooling system. You still have to have a rooftop condenser, so it doesn't really change that, but they're significantly more energy efficient, but also give you the ability to potentially take advantage of our rental program, so. Just wanna make sure I plant that seed in your head, because then also, of course, the next thing from me is gonna be, it's a great roof for solar, and if you've got an all-electric building, you've got plenty of rooftop space there to, to do that.
I'm gonna start with the, the electric, yeah, that's pretty much every apartment we do, it's all electric, and that's the beginning, so. But I'm gonna let Jeff take the solar.
Oh, thanks. I think the same boat with the, with the green or the, the grass on the roof, it's just there's, based on past experience with that limited area, I don't know what we'd be able to power with that, again, looking at, again, referencing Gatsby Cannabis, and we, we did that project, we had a massive roof, full of, you know, full array, broken up a bit by, by rooftop units, and I think I was told by a mechanical engineer that it powered the lights in the office. So I just don't know if we have enough surface area to do that, factoring in, you know, the condensing units and pathways to get to those for maintenance. You know, is it, is it, I hate to say worth the investment, but that's, is it going to net enough with that limited area and space that we have? We can study it.
I think you'd be surprised, I'm happy I talked about it offline.
Okay.
But I think it's a building that sets up well for it, in the sense that you don't have very large individual units, so the individual load of the units is not very big, which then leads itself to being able to put smaller arrays in.
Okay.
So, let's see, that is most of my questions. Yeah, that's, that's all my questions, actually, at this point.
Thank you, all excellent points.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'll just make a couple of points, you know, I'm not gonna talk about the merits of it just yet, because I wanna hear from, you know, the public hearing, but I couldn't help but talk about some technological solutions, and I think you guys have done it before on other projects. So if there's a concern in the dumpster area with that one spot, there's easy sensors out there that, you know, can show lights on the other end of the wall, like, hey, caution, car backing out. Those are very affordable, and if the only other users in your parking lot are the residents, they're gonna know what that means, that in the one in a hundredth or seven-hundred chance that there's a car coming in and one's coming out of that spot, there are technical solutions to that, it's, it's all kind of contained on one private entity that, that don't cost a lot. And maybe that gives you a little bit more maneuverability to put recycling bins in the dumpster area and not have to thrift too much there. Because I do think your residents will want that, you know what I mean? We all like to recycle, I particularly like it because I have less trash to take out, it's amazing. The other element with the chargers, those are type-two chargers, I imagine, right?
The long-term ones.
Yeah, so they wouldn't be, yeah, yeah, they'll, you know, take five to eight hours to charge a vehicle. Where do you, where would you mount those? Would those be sticks? They'd be pedestal sticks, so one option you could have when you're doing your wiring plan is to think about putting them in between the spaces. And then that way, you get one per two spaces, and if someone's occupying the charger at the time, you know, there's software your residents can get for the charger that will notify them when the person is done, and, you know, they can, the other person can come out and plug it in if they need to. So you've kind of hedged your bet on every spot, so that's a possibility, too. Only things I've seen in, you know, my vocation in, in different areas, so. That's what I, just on the, the site plan, that's what I had, really is recommendations, I guess.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, well, thank you, you can go ahead and have a seat, this is a public hearing, so at this point, we'll open the public comment on this agenda item. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item, in the back there?
Hi, everyone, I'm Alex Morford, I live on Sunnybrook, near Thirteen Mile and Main, and I'm here tonight to support the redevelopment of twelve twenty-five North Main into housing. There's a lot of pedestrian activity in front of this site, because it's on a primary route into downtown, and also because there's only sidewalk on this side of Main Street due to the cemetery across the street. Personally, I've walked past this site hundreds of times, most recently on my way here earlier this evening. This project provides community benefits to the many pedestrians through the elimination of two sidewalk-crossing driveways, and replacing an unwelcoming to pedestrian auto-oriented business with a streetscape designed for people instead of cars. people instead of cars. I understand that technically, they have a two-wide driveway in the back, but I believe a main purpose of driveway width requirements is to prevent cars from quickly turning across the sidewalk into a parking lot. This project has an even safer solution for Main Street pedestrians of entirely eliminating the driveway over the sidewalk. Furthermore, this project is exactly the kind of small-scale multifamily housing development supported by most Royal Oak residents, and is consistent with the new master plan. As a community, we need to support projects like this to ensure we have enough homes for everyone who wants to live in Royal Oak. The density and parking variances this proposal needs show the issues with our current zoning ordinances that I hope we can solve soon. Not every family has two vehicles, and making a household with one car pay for parking they won't use is how we make our housing less affordable, not more affordable. Capping density when a building is otherwise meeting lot coverage and height requirements further negatively impacts housing prices by constraining supply. The only request I have on this project is to make sure we don't lose pedestrian access on Main Street during the build. As I mentioned, there's only sidewalk on this side of the street. If for some reason construction would require a sidewalk closure, I would really appreciate a pedestrian detour onto the adjacent roadway. I don't think we should require a long pedestrian detour to another sidewalk. Overall, I would like to see the city make a policy for safe, convenient, short pedestrian detours during sidewalk closures. There've been quite a few sidewalk closures on my walking routes lately, and often there isn't much notice or reasonable detour provided. Thank you for your time tonight, and I hope you join me in support of this project.
Thank you.
Back there.
Hi, my name is Sean Wolski. I'm a homeowner in Royal Oak. I live in Maplewood neighborhood. So I support this. This, this proposal is replacing kind of an aging, kind of dilapidated car wash with housing that we need in this community. Like my colleague mentioned, this is, you know, a midsize, you know, smaller development that a lot of people support, and again, providing housing that is needed. Again, echoing some of the concerns, this kind of shows the problems with our current zoning ordinance and all the variances that they have to request for something that is quite reasonable and giving us something that we need. You know, specifically, you know, with the density requirements, they would need a lot that is 20,000 foot, square feet bigger than what they have, which, again, just doesn't make sense, especially if you want to replace, you know, this, this small car wash. It's just, you know, for every, one of these projects gets proposed, and we don't know what wasn't proposed here, you know, across the city. And I appreciate the presentation showing, you know, what they could have done without these requirements. If they were just meeting the requirements here, you know, all the, you know, they'd have to cut down on the building, they have to make it taller, have a lot more parking, you know, just taking away green space just to comply with the current requirements. So I support these variances. I think this shows the problem with our current zoning ordinance. It just constraints what's possible, and, you know, doesn't allow needed housing in Royal Oak. I did just want to point out, you know, the conversation that we were having about this, you know, we do, we need housing, and that's important. You know, EV chargers are nice. That's not, that, to me, is not a priority. Housing is a priority. I appreciate, you know, the attention to green infrastructure here, but, you know, at the end of the day, I made no disrespect to Mr. Gontina. Solar is important. Solar also adds costs, as they will have to pay for that. The permeable parking, that's a cool idea, like that. It says it's $150,000. This could be added to the cost of this, which, you know, fine. I think it's important for stormwater, but I do think it is important for a planning commission and new council people, they're elected, to keep an, you know, just keep an eye on, you know, the, you know, the priority is to build more housing. It is automatically more green to live in a, you know, live in the development like this, that is smaller, that is more compact. You're already getting a lot more, you know, energy efficiency just based on the building. Again, I totally support solar, but my single-family house doesn't have solar. Most don't. Most don't have green roofs in single-family homes, and my single-family home, I'm sure, is less energy efficient than one of these units. So again, support this. And again, I think this shows the, the problems with their zoning ordinances, and they need to be, take a look at. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak on this project? All right. Seeing none, go ahead and close the public comment. Bring it back to this side. Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Douglas?
Yes. We heard a comment about maintaining sidewalk access during construction. In your implementation, do you expect that you'll already be tearing up and having to replace the landscaping on the right-of-way? And is there an option to add a temporary sidewalk, like closer to the street? Because it's a pretty generous right-of-way right there. And, and still be able to secure your property and work there?
Yeah, good, very good question. So we will be tearing up the sidewalk, obviously. Yeah, I think we could. I don't know the details. I would almost need our contractor to, but, I mean, I, we would do whatever it takes to work with the city to make sure that folks have a safe way through. You can't just say, you're blocked off, right? So we would work through that and figure that out.
Good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Unsurprisingly, I have more questions. But for Mr. Murphy, I think, you know, when I, when we're looking at projects in general, oftentimes we have to look at that individual project within the context of the overall area and think about the future considerations, right? And so when I look at this, the, the overall area, the, the alleyway that is to the west of this project runs north-south, but ends at the property to the north. There's only one other alleyway running east-west between Crooks and Main Street here. My question for you is, there, there was a deviation in there that indicated the, the parking spaces are a little bit shallower than what we typically, the standard we typically would like in terms of just area to back out and whatnot. This may be a difficult question to answer, but certainly I could see the potential for these two alleys in particular, to at some point, in, in an effort to facilitate further development, be vacated by the city, based on the properties they serve and just sort of how they're oriented. Does the applicant's proposal in terms of placing the parking the way that they are with that, that deviation of the spaces being a little bit shallower, do you foresee any potential conflict if there was eventually an alley vacation, understanding that that property becomes essentially the applicant's property? If an alley vacation happens, is that problematic in any way if we have projects where we're giving relief in parking situations where they're on the alley?
All of the, well, more, at least 50% of the property owners adjacent to the alley would need to sign a petition requesting that the city commission consider vacation, and then it gets circulated to a variety of different city departments for their comment, chiefly for the fire department, for their access. I would imagine that the fire department would have an extreme amount of objection to vacating the alley. I, I know that we would, simply because of the 90-degree access to those parking spaces that you're referencing on the west side of the alley.
Sorry, Rick, but plus there's sanitary running through the alley, and there's power lines, like high-power lines. I think that, I think that bad boy's standing there for a very long time.
May very well be, and I appreciate all the context. I just, I was looking at it and thought, well, certainly not out of this, out of the question, but sounds like highly unlikely.
I, I believe it's highly unlikely.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions for either Mr. Murphy or the applicant? While you guys are stewing on your thoughts, I'm going to go ahead and take this opportunity to remind the applicant that we do not have a full board tonight. You certainly have the option to postpone. Obviously, without having a full complement of planning commissioners, the vote could be very different. Not that we anticipate that, but we also want to make sure that you are aware of the option to postpone, and so we have a difference.
Love it. We went this far, guys. Let's, let's go and see where it goes.
Very good, very good.
What do you have? Quick question?
Oh, Mr. Cooper, yes.
So just very faint again. So as I'm looking at the overall height massing of the building as well, so it looks like our roof line is at, roof line's at 23 feet, eight foot, or 20 foot, eight and three quarters of an inch, but stair towers go up to 32, seven and a quarter. The stair towers themselves do not count for building height in this instance?
That's correct. The zoning ordinance does identify that there are certain exceptions to the height that are allowed to go above and beyond the maximum height. You've correctly noted that stair towers are one of those items that's allowed to extend to a certain distance above that maximum, and they're below all that.
Okay. And then the generator itself outside, is that gas or is that diesel? Is that a transformer or is that a generator?
Transformer.
It's transformer, okay.
It's, the plan's all-electric building.
Okay. And, and does DTE confirm they have enough power to provide you if you're adding?
Not, not yet. We have to go down that road. However, based on the projects we've done, I'd be shocked if it is not. But we'll see what happens. Yeah. I've been shocked, I've been shocked before.
No pun intended.
No pun intended.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions, further discussion, motions?
Maybe I'll kick off the discussion.
Please, Mr. Mayor.
I mean, from a 10,000-foot level, if we're looking at what's there today and what would be replaced, I mean, I think it's a significant improvement, not just for the property, but also for, I'll say, adjacent and area-related properties. I think that it serves a need anytime we can fit multifamily housing on a footprint, especially in an area that is, you know, backed by multifamily housing and commercial. We've talked about this in our master plan, about housing on commercial corridors. I think is a good thing. It fits a need of the community in so many ways. When we think about the growth of Main Street in the next 100, 50, 100 years, you know, we can't just think about the next five years, but 50 to 100 years, and I take this from Commissioner Douglas, is that you have a project that's also, you know, street adjacent. So the idea of walkability, presence, placemaking, a sightly neighborhood, a walkable neighborhood, it meets all of those objectives. And I do, we, we had a couple of great folks at the public hearing that, that really brought the attention that there is an environmental benefit to density. I think that's a thing that sometimes we overlook. When we have bigger projects, we have more, I'll say, in the budget to tackle a lot of things, because there's more square footage, there's more opportunity to put the technology in based on the value of the project. I think in this one, you know, we're, it's a housing play, but with the housing play, you do get environmental benefits because of the density. I like the permeable pavements, pavers in the back. I always think, even, even if we have detention, even if that's less or more expensive, you're still taking that water, putting it into the system, cleaning it. And it just seems like a waste when you can put it in the ground with the, so I know it's an expense, but I think it's a responsible way of going about at least taking care of some of the stormwater. So that really excites me. I've been, we've been pushing for permeable pavements for a long time, and to see a petitioner volunteer it is really a good thing. So I think it's a good project. I think it meets, I, I think the petitioner's attorney also said we're kind of in this twilight zone, which is interesting. So I'm curious to see what my colleagues think about it. But, you know, when we start to move towards how we're zoning, especially along commercial corridors, I, I think, and I would see and envision that we'd see more projects like this along our main roads. So that's all I've got to say about that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other comments? Commissioner Douglas?
Well, I'm just going to go ahead and move approval with the, what's the word I want here? The conditions, typical conditions specified in the staff memo.
Contingencies listed.
Contingencies, that's the word.
Okay.
And then I'll speak to my motion.
Okay. Motion for Commissioner Douglas to approve the conditional rezoning and site plan subject to contingencies listed in the staff report. Is there a second? Second amendment, Mr. Mayor? Is there a discussion?
Yes, thank you. The recently approved master plan, as you look at the recently approved master plan, the intersection of Catalpa, Crooks, Rochester in Maine, in my mind, is like one of the most desirable and high-potential sites in the entire city. And this development is completely consistent with what we would envision there. As they point out, you have restaurant, hardware, grocery, drugstores, all within a walkable distance. It's just an excellent location. Furthermore, the development that they propose, missing, it falls into the category of missing middle housing, you know, mid-level multifamily development, which again, is a priority of the master plan. I do want to address one thing, and that is that both the neighborhood, our current neighborhood business zoning and the text in the master plan suggests that it is desirable to have businesses on ground floors and residential up above, which is one of the reasons, I think, why the applicants have used the conditional rezoning process and why we want to get rid of it in the future, because it's time-consuming and, and anyway. So I'm going to, since we have our, our economic development director here, I just wanted to get a sense of what the market is like right now and what the demand is for the kind of spaces that you would find in this relatively small building. I mean, and, and I'll, I'll, before I say that, I will say that the city of Grand Rapids, with their master plan here a number of years ago, was established very strict requirements for businesses on the ground level. And in recent years, they have had to walk that back, because there has not been demand for that commercial space. So with that in mind, and you probably are familiar with it, I'll ask you to expound.
Absolutely. So there will always be somewhat of a market for a mixed-use development, where we would see retail on the bottom and residential on the top. However, what is a consistent rhetoric and something that is a priority, not only in Royal Oak, across Metro Detroit and the state of Michigan, and the country itself, is housing. And creating multifamily dwellings are becoming huge priorities, especially here, I would say, for the future in the city of Royal Oak. So I think that we will see areas where those type of developments that, you know, have the block off on the bottom are, are still relevant and existing, but they are not, they are no longer the priority where we should be putting all of our eggs in that basket. We need to really be looking at creating adaptable and accessible housing. And, and that often is coming in the form of multifamily residential, and is a huge priority now. We also have different corridors in the city that still are zoned, and I would anticipate accommodate the type of zoning that we're talking about, where, you know, it's something on the, different on the bottom and residential on the top. But in this specific instance, I think that making this multifamily is a great use of this unique space that we have to develop here, for even talking about pedestrian traffic and what we have over there. You know, a lot of time ground floor is for traffic-based. This has got one sidewalk on one side of the road. The pedestrian traffic is already going to be limited to some regard. I don't think that, that type of development would necessarily thrive in this location. And based on everything we've seen here tonight, it really does seem like the prime destination to put some multifamily housing, to develop that and create some more livable space for our residents.
Thank, very sensible. Thank you, and I agree. And I, I will add a little piece of history, just because I have the microphone, about the permeability of this soil. If you've studied the geology of this region, and if you've looked at the maps after the 2014 floods, you will see, because what we did was, we mapped all of the places that had water in their basements. And if you look at that map, the corridor going up Main Street and Rochester, there are few, if any, flooded homes, because that was a sand dune back when this was a lake. So I anticipate you will have success in your permeable paver endeavor. I'm done.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Cooper?
I think you just made their property worth, worth more money. It's a beachfront, apparently. I, I agree. I think this is a, this is a great use for a tough lot. It's, it's, if it, being neighborhood business, you can have retail or residential. You can't have both. When you start to add parking and all the other requirements that are there, I think it fits in well. It's going to be a great streetscape and really add to a, kind of a, an unsightly streetscape as it sits right now. So kudos. I think it's a, a great design, great use for the space. And again, these are like 1,100 to 1,300 square foot units, which I think are appropriately sized. They're not too big, they're not too small, and I'm sure they probably pencil out enough to really make the development worthwhile and, and be there for a long time.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. All right, I've got a few quick comments that I'll make. I, I do think it's a good project as well, as was spoken about at public comment. You know, housing is one of the most sustainable things that we can do. And I do want to point out that, you know, bringing 10 units to this site of this size is fantastic, because there's other sites that are in different areas of the city that are of the same size that have one single-family home on them. So we certainly want to encourage more housing in the city, but only in the appropriate areas, and reinforce the notion that we're not supportive of that happening within our neighborhoods. This is a perfect site to, to build multifamily housing on a difficult site and bring 10 new homes and hopefully 10 new families to be able to call Royal Oak home. But the bigger thing, and I think Commissioner Douglas spoke to it initially, was the size of the units. I think these are a great size to meet a large section of the people that want to come live in Royal Oak. Some of them are going to be single folks, some of them are going to be smaller families. I think the I think the size of these units meets all those needs quite well, so I'm happy to see that. I certainly think this is a higher and better use for this land than a quarter car wash. I certainly have used that quarter wash several times, but I can count on one hand, in the 20 years I've lived here, the number of times I've used it. So, this is definitely a higher and better use. One of the deviations listed was the deficiency of green space. And I wanted to address that a little bit because, while I did ask a lot of questions around sustainability, I do think the applicant has done more than what we typically see and brought more to the table than what we typically see to start out with. I was trying to press for more, of course. But this site is essentially 100% impervious surface right now. It is 100% adding to all of our stormwater issues in the city. And what this project is bringing to the table is not only actual green space and landscaping. The reason I asked the question about the infill of those two curb cuts is those will now be pervious surface versus impervious surface. The applicant bringing the pervious pavers to not only the parking area and the patio areas. I think when you add up all of those things, they're well beyond the 10% requirement in terms of green space. Now, it may not be physically the color green, but it's meeting the intent of why we want to get the green space in there. So, I compliment you on that. Also want to compliment you on the fact that it's within the height requirements. That is not one of the listed deviations here, is that you needed more height of this building to get the density that you need. And then lastly, I do appreciate you including the test-fit example in your presentation. I think oftentimes when projects get presented to us, they get presented to us because that's simply what the owner of that piece of property wants. And they don't give much consideration to what the by-right zoning is there. The fact that you were able to demonstrate for us why the underlying zoning is difficult to develop it that way certainly helped me understand why this product is better than what's currently available or would be potentially available. So, I'll get off my soapbox now and just say I will be supporting the project. Any other comments? All right, with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of recommending approval of the conditional rezoning and site plan, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it is approved. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, we will keep the ball rolling here. Next item on the agenda is item 4B, Public Hearing Special Land Use and Site Plan, SP 25-11-13, 108 South Main Street. Mr. Murphy?
This site's located, as you noted, on the west side of South Main Street, just south of 11 Mile Road in the downtown, more specifically, the central business zoning district. On the ground floor, there are two restaurants at this locate, at this two-story building. There are two ground-floor restaurant tenants, and there are some professional offices upstairs and a yoga studio. Petitioner proposes to use some of those tenant spaces for what they've described in their plan of operation as a game, for game showrooms and two of the suites on the second floor. The business plan identifies that participants would compete in a game show environment with live hosts and lighting and sound effects that simulate a real television studio. The zoning ordinance doesn't have a specific definition for game show use, and it's not referenced in any particular zoning district. So, staff is left with the determination of a most closely-associated use that is identified in the zoning ordinance. There is a definition for an entertainment facility in the zoning ordinance, and that's what we determined to be most closely associated with. In the central business zoning district, entertainment facilities are a special land use. And so, the proposal for, to establish a game show room setting on the second floor does require site plan and special land use approval from you tonight. I will say that they're not proposing any changes to the site, so there are no site plan essentially elements to consider. Really, the focus tonight is on whether you believe that their proposed business operation meets the criteria or the basis for you to determine whether it's an appropriate special land use at this location or not. So, we'll hear from the petitioner, and this is a public hearing, so we'll hear from the public as well.
All right, great. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Any questions first for Mr. Murphy?
I have one quick one, and it was the discussion I was having with Mr. Mark. And I'll say it aloud for the benefit of everybody. Does this require two actions because it's special land use and a site plan? Based on your comment about no site plan changes, I'm not sure if we need two actions, but I want to ask the question.
Yes, it does. And in the, in staff's, in the memorandum, you'll see that, rather, on the agenda, you'll see that there's consideration of the site plan and special land use approval. So, on page, the last page of the memorandum, you'll see the discretionary items that you should consider. And if you wish to grant approval of the site plan, you'll have listed what we refer to as the boilerplate or standard contingencies. So, there are two actions, you're correct, special land use approval and the associated site plan. And those can be done as separate motions, but obviously, you're thinking of both of them when you're trying to determine whether the special land uses, is appropriate to, permit is appropriate to provide to the petitioner based on their plan of operation.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'll invite the petitioner, if they're in the room, to come present. Does not appear that they are. Okay. This is always interesting when this happens. I'm gonna go ahead and bring it back to this side, then. What do we want to do?
Do you want to hold the public hearing?
Oh, that's right, sorry. Well, since the applicant's not here to present, I'll move on to the public hearing of this item. There are some from the public that would like to speak on this matter. Seeing that, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing.
If I could, I think, I think it's, despite the petitioner's lack of presence here tonight, I think it's, you can determine what you'd like to do, but they've also provided you with a very detailed business plan of operation that should summarize everything that they've proposed to do. I would just ask that you keep that in mind, no matter what your decision is tonight.
Fair enough. Anyone have questions or comments or any discussion points right now? I do think it was interesting that we did not have a, a land use that fit this category.
Yeah. This, this is a good type of thing to keep in mind when we look to different land uses. And it comes to the news, the upcoming zoning ordinance, like what, what is an entertainment facility? Specifically defining it and where is it appropriate. One could probably argue that a downtown setting is where the most entertainment should be. And is.
Oops, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I, I think it's a pretty interesting idea when you read their business plan. Kind of cool. I don't know if it's been around. Maybe I'm not on the interwebs that much. But a game show, I was like, game show, and then I started reading it more. And it's like, oh, so this is really about not just bringing an entertainment option for people, but bringing people together at a social level, which is, I think, a very important objective and should be one of those quiet missions of a city, is get people off the couch, get them with their friends, loneliness, depression. You know, folks are tied to their machines. They sit at home alone. And any opportunity we can bring to the city to get them out and talk to each other is a very healthy thing, right? So, that was very interesting to me. I don't hold it against the petitioner for not being here tonight. It is interesting when it happens. We never know what happened, you know, family emergency, whatever. But this, to me, seems a technical vote, more than a thoughtful, like, oh, tell me about how you're going to, you know, do Family Feud, you know? I mean, it's, it seems pretty cool. And I, personally, I think it'd be kind of fun to get out there with some friends and try this, so.
Anyone else? Mr. Cooper?
Just saying, I agree with that. I think it's very, it's a great concept. I think it's a great location. It fits the downtown area. My kids would love the Family Feud. They would, they would go after each other pretty well. The question I have, just looking at it, it's more code-related. It doesn't appear there's an elevator for ADA to the second floor of that building. I'm assuming that will fall under rehab code and not be necessary, but I just want to make sure that that's not gonna hang anything up.
Let's take a look.
So, I'm trying to remember. I used to go to the yoga studio there. But I, now that you say that, I can't envision it.
And again, with it being an existing building, I think you might get away with it, not having to do it.
Right. Well, yeah, I'm sure if any, if the yoga studio was there, they were able to operate there, that I'm sure those conditions are met.
The joys of old buildings.
Yeah.
I think that's probably true considering, one of the things we've already discussed is that on their site plan, there's really not a lot of significant changes to the building. We're talking about effectively tenant improvement, not a huge intensity change. I'm assuming building will look at it the same way.
But, yes, I'll just jump in as well. Aside from that, I would, I make a motion to move to approve with the contingencies as, as noted by, by staff.
Just to reiterate, this is two actions. So, is your motion to approve the special land use?
Yes.
I would need to go first.
Special land use, yes.
Okay. Motion on table for Mr. Cooper to recommend approval of the special land use. Any second? Seconded by Commissioner Douglas. Any more discussion? Go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, special land use has been approved. There really is not a lot of discussion on the site plan. I don't know if anyone has any comments, further comments, I should say.
I'll move approval.
All right.
I'll second.
Motion approved by Commissioner Douglas, seconded by Mr. Cooper. Any further discussion? All right, call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, site plan's approved. I'd love to congratulate the petitioner, but hopefully they'll watch the proceedings.
And the winner is? Just expecting them to come out behind door number two.
I'm not nearly as good at those jokes as, as the mayor is, so. All right, moving on here, item, item five, other business. Got some sign variances here. So, item 5A is a sign variance, SV 25-11-05, a sign variance at 1621 East 11 Mile. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Murphy.
So, this automobile filling station and convenience store is located at the intersection of 11 Mile Road and Campbell. It's in city's sign area two, under the city's sign ordinance. This sign area number two does allow for various signs related to the business. Petitioner did submit an application to, for a permit to install a product pricing sign on the station's fuel pump canopy. And the ordinance does allow for one product pricing sign on the site, and it's, can be a maximum of 25 square feet in area. And I'll jump to the image below, which is a photograph that illustrates they do have a monument sign at the intersection right now. So, they currently do have a product pricing sign on that monument sign. And, and they wish to add the component of a product pricing sign, as shown on this illustration, to, to the canopy that exists on this, at the fuel pumps. Again, the ordinance allows for one product pricing sign. They're proposing an additional product pricing sign. That product pricing sign can be up to 25 square feet in area. And when we include the existing and the proposed, they're beyond that 25 square feet that's allowable. So, they're seeking a variance to have a second product sign and to go above and beyond the maximum allowable square footage associated with the product sign. We will note that, if, some of you may recall, that the filling station came before you for site plan approval more recently in 2020 and previously in 2007, which included landscaping at the base of that monument sign. And I'm gonna scroll back down to the imagery to illustrate that the landscaping did exist, these two comparative photographs. And the top photograph shows in November of two, of 2020, and the bottom photograph shows in October of 2021. So, the petitioner removed landscaping, put in crushed stone and some additional portable signs. All of that is not in compliance with the sign ordinance and not in compliance with the approved site plan. So, we want to point that out because we believe it's relevant to, to the fact that they put out some portable signs as well. But we, they are asking tonight, again, for a variance to allow for a second product sign and to exceed the maximum allowable area related to that sign.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Any questions for staff? Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Murphy, have we addressed the noncompliance with them? And what has their response been?
We did bring it to their attention, and they chose not to correct it prior to coming in front of you for the variance request tonight at a minimum.
Okay. Or have a plan to, or?
No.
Okay. And that's a willful, well, at least it's a deliberate noncompliance because it was removed. It wasn't like something, now, did the ownership change hands recently?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, all right. Sometimes that could happen where they're like, oh, we're gonna change some things and not knowing. But, you know, I think if you're in this business, you gotta know everything you do. Near, adjacent to a public right-of-way has to be, you should look at your plan.
Mr. Cooper?
Signage on the canopy, because that's technically a parapet, does that classify as a roof sign? Not permissible, or is that a permissible?
No, in the city's sign ordinance, there are specific provisions for canopies for automobile filling stations, which differ from signage on buildings on the property. So, canopy's treated differently than a traditional building.
Okay.
Mr. Murphy, I could be wrong. I don't believe the applicant is here tonight, so I'll ask you the question. Did they give any sort of justification or demonstrate any sort of hardship as to why they're requesting the second, essentially, monument sign on the canopy?
They did not give us any written documentation.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions for staff? I, oh, you are here.
No, I'm not here, but do you take comments on this?
I will, I will say that we did notify the, per the city's sign ordinance, we notify the adjacent property owners of the variance request. So, it's appropriate to hear comment that might be relevant to you.
Sure. It's, this is not necessarily a public hearing, so we don't, correct. Yeah, I just want to clarify that. Yeah, I don't believe the applicant is here. If the applicant is here hiding somewhere, please make yourself known. But if you have comments you'd like to make, please, please approach the podium.
Mia asked about gardener signs. I have no stake in this, but from a signage standpoint, I might be able to shed some light to why I would think they're asking for a second sign. If you go back to the sign where the monument is, and that sits on a corner, the way that traffic comes, you don't see that sign in all directions. So, they're asking for something up higher to where you will see that digital sign at a higher elevation. That is pure speculation, but if this was me, that would be my reason why. And the landscaping one, if you go to where the, before, where the landscaping was still there, okay, nevermind, I thought it might have been going, growing up higher to where it's starting to cover the bottom of that monument. But it doesn't appear to be that way. So, that's just my two cents.
Thank you.
Thank you for your knowledge.
All right, so I guess we'll bring it back to this side. Any, any other questions, concerns, comments?
I do have a quick question.
Mr. Murphy?
Joseph, do you know if this is, excuse me, given it's a marathon station, is this a corporate-level-driven change or is this a franchisee change, if you know?
Ooh, I'm not aware of that. Okay.
I also have a question.
Mr. Mayor?
Does anyone know why gas is $2.49? Is this subliminal? Like, come to our gas station, you know, that's the whole thing here. We're not gonna show up. We're just gonna put this out there so people think gas is 2.49.
It's on TV.
It's on TV. It's got, it's on the internet. It's gotta be true.
I'm sure the applicant would be able to answer that for you if they were here.
I'm just laughing. The person that put in those numbers, like, what are we gonna put? 2.49.
2.49.
Let's put 1.79. No, no, it's too much. Let's put in 2.49.
Any other comments? All right, I'm gonna make a few. I'm not inclined to support this, only from the standpoint of the, the current monument sign that exists. It certainly advertises the product that they have, the pricing. We've often talked about signage having a very primary function of wayfinding. wayfinding. I think that's handled already with the signage that's there. I'm sort of particularly perturbed by the fact that they are not in compliance with actions that have been taken in the past. And the fact that they're not here to sort of present and make their own case makes it even increasingly more difficult for me to, to come to a different conclusion. So I am not necessarily in favor of granting this variance based on the discussion and information that's been presented. Mr. Cooper.
I would agree with that, similar to what staff had already said, that we should take the action until the required landscaping and whatever is remedied and taken care of. So, not knowing what they want it for, again, there's no explanation as to why. They do have, I think it's one or the other, but if they were to do a secondary sign, why can't they be within the compliance of the overall square footage as well?
Okay.
Is there a comment or a motion?
Well, I think it's actually a discussion point in the sense that we still have options, if I'm understanding things correctly. We could, I believe it's, it would be to table this item, correct?
It would be to postpone it.
Postpone it. Yeah, table would be the same meeting, right? Yeah. The option would be to postpone this to a future meeting. We also have the option to approve, we also have the option to deny. All of those options are still on the table. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I'm inclined not to postpone or table because I think that the applicant had every opportunity as a, I guess, to, I mean, write us a letter explaining why they wanted this, if they couldn't be here tonight. And in the context of currently not being compliant and not even having a response to us, I'm not sure that tabling it or postponing it is in the best interest of the community, as it would only, you know, take more time from this body and from other folks that are waiting to get their projects heard in subsequent months. I think this seems like something that, at least a letter, or a correspondence, or an email, which sometimes happens, people can't make it and they send us, like, the one before, they gave us a business plan, they told us what it was, right? And this one has a number of different issues with it, so I just don't want to waste and spin our wheels. It doesn't seem like we're getting the benefit of the doubt here, or we're not getting the courtesy, maybe shall I say, both in terms of a city and this commission. I don't know that we are obligated to offer that same courtesy.
Is that a motion?
Move to deny?
All right, move to deny the sign variance request. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Douglas. Any further discussion? Commissioner Douglas.
We have had gas stations in front of us on multiple occasions over the years, and we have been pretty strict in our, in our enforcement of the sign ordinance. I mean, we'll give somebody a couple of inches here or there, but this is like far outside of any of the exceptions we've shown in the past.
Any other discussion? All right, that'll call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the variance fails. Motion passes, variance fails. Okay, next item of business, another sign variance, item five B, SV two-five-dash-eleven-dash-zero-six, sign variance at three zero one five North Main Street. Mr. Murphy.
This site is the Salvation Army, which is located on North Main Street, just south of Thirteen Mile Road. It's not located within a designated sign area in the sign ordinance. This institutional uses that are located outside of a designated sign area, like this one, are allowed to have one monument sign that has frontage on a major street, Main Street certainly is. So the petitioner has an existing sign, and we'll look at photographs, that is located between the public sidewalk, their front drive aisle, and the front of the church, the religious institution building. And they have a monument sign that exists now. They're proposing to remove the static component of it, keep, retain the existing masonry base, and put in an electronic message center on top of that existing base. And the building division did review the request for a sign permit and determined that needs to, needs to have a variance request from the maximum allowable square footage of 25 feet. What they're proposing is 35 feet, a square, square footage of 35 feet. And it's simply to replace the existing size with a new electronic message center. And the petitioner obviously is here tonight, and they can speak with regard to the intent of their proposal, and how they believe that it meets the sign ordinance criteria for a variance request.
All right, great, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Murphy, Ms. Dan? All right, with that, I will ask the applicant to come up and present.
Again, Mia asked of gardener signs, here on behalf of the Salvation Army. And what was stated is correct. We are proposing a new sign cabinet with a message center component of it that would meet the size of the allowable message center square footage to the sign. The existing sign is 36 square feet that is on that masonry base, so we are not asking for any additional square footage as to what is there. We are only merely asking for 10 additional square feet. The reusing of the existing masonry base, that base is in good shape, and so when possible, we like to be able to recycle and reuse versus having to tear something down and put in, put in new. It goes along with the aesthetics of the Salvation Army that is there. The message center will allow the Salvation Army to convey messages to the community that is very important to, to the salvation and to the community. It can help promote food drives, it can schedule worship events, and speak to any community support that they do lend, in the city of Royal Oak and others that are coming to that area. These, I was not able to determine, when I had spoke with the municipality, if that existing sign was granted a variance, or if that was the code when that sign was installed. So I wasn't able to determine that, and that was important because of the fact we're not going any larger. The sign itself also will update to the more recognizable iconic logo of the Salvation Army, as opposed to what is there. And again, fitting in with the, with the theme of the area. The hardship stems from the unique site conditions that have been there since that was developed, so it's out of our control for that. And again, retaining the masonry base, which is in condition with the property's characters, character and constraints, sign proportions. The, the sign itself stays within the ordinance of being five feet from grade to the top of the sign, so again, we're not going any higher. We're just merely asking for additional 10 square feet. And that, again, would meet the same size of the sign that's already there.
Great, thank you. Any questions for our applicant?
Mia.
For Ms. Mia.
Happens all the time.
Mr. Cooper.
So just verifying, again, the logo, the shield, is that sticking out with Lexan?
No, there would be a Lexan face with first surface vinyl, so it would be, the, it will light up, the black won't light up because it's, light doesn't come through a black vinyl, but the Salvation Army will light up the colors, just like on the sign that they have now, that all lights up, and I believe on the cross it lights up as well, on their existing sign. And the, the message center does adhere to any of the township, or any of the city's parameters as far as lighting, brightness, that's all controllable, and will be set to whatever the standards are of the city when it is fabricated and installed.
Thank you.
Any other comments, motions?
We did provide notice, per the signed ordinance, to the adjacent property owners. Again, while it's not a public hearing, your opportunity to offer that comment, period. Think it would be appropriate, if there's any neighboring property owners that were noticed, or others from the public that are interested in speaking on this agenda item, please let me know. Seeing none, we'll continue with the proceeding.
Any other comments or motion or anything?
Just clarification. So what I understand is that the request for 10 square feet is to the existing ordinance, it's not actually 10 square feet additional, because it's the exact same footprint of the current sign.
Correct.
So the status quo in terms of size would remain, the status quo in terms of an illuminated part of the sign would remain, the message board is really the only thing that is dramatically different from what we have today.
Correct.
Yeah.
Bringing the sign to a current law.
Do you still have, which is interesting, that was a big gamble, do you still have Sunday School at 9:30 a.m.? Oh, okay, I was, I mean, you know, hey.
Can we do 2.49 per gas, probably?
I was gonna say, they put that sign up many, many years ago.
We generally pull from the website, we pull from the websites when we put whatever, you know, if we're doing a financial institution, we put maybe a variable rate that we know is legit. We don't just pull.
Can we do nine? I'm sorry, the sign says 9:30.
Anyone's welcome to go.
To follow up on your point, Mr. Mayor, yeah, it's exactly the same size. I think it's just modern conventions of our zoning ordinance is what's requiring the 10 square feet, but I also want to point out that staff did mention that the electronic message board is also within compliance of our ordinance as well.
Is within?
Yes. Yep. Ms. Cooper.
Just noticing, it looks like the cross goes away, so technically isn't the sign smaller?
Yes.
The sign of the cross?
Fair enough. Probably by 10 square feet.
Probably.
I'm sure that's it.
It probably is.
Okay, any other questions, concerns, motions? Prayers?
I'll throw a motion on the table to approve.
Motion to approve the variance from the mayor.
I will second.
Seconded by Mr. Cooper. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your variance is granted.
Thank you.
I have a sign, you know, been to a game show thing when I lived in, we were stationed over in the Milwaukee area. It's a great thing for, for any teams to come and just play, just to do a lot of good camaraderie, kind of used to do so.
Yeah, yeah.
This is something I think would be great for, for anyone to be part of.
Thank you.
I'm not, I'm not a part of that, but it's something I think.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You too.
You too, thank you. Moving on to item five C, review of the zoning ordinance, request for proposals. Mr. Murphy.
In July, you reviewed six requests, submittals that were requests for qualifications to help us develop a new zoning ordinance. You determined that those six firms were capable of submitting a request for proposals, or in essence, a bid price, with their proposal to help us write a zoning ordinance. So six, there were, again, there were six firms that were qualified to do so. You received three responses, a response from Clarion, Code Studio, and ZoneCo. So hopefully you've had the chance to review them. When we did receive their submittals, we did ask them if they're, if they were able to meet, to come to town, if they, if you so choose to interview them, to come to town for in-person interviews, and we did ask them their availability on December the ninth, which is your next available, next regularly scheduled meeting, as well as the following day on December the 10th. So you will see an updated memo that was placed in front of each of your computers tonight, which identify that not all, not all of those firms have a preferred in-person interview date. I'll note that Clarion can meet on Wednesday, Code Studio either day, and ZoneCo on Tuesday. So it's, it's a good, for you to discuss their proposals tonight and determine whether you want to interview firms. If you do want to interview all three firms, there's a suggested motion for holding a special meeting starting at 6:00 p.m. on Tuesday, December the ninth, and another special meeting that you would need to vote for, to vote upon, to have a special meeting on December the 10th, Wednesday the 10th, starting at 6:00 p.m. to interview two of the firms, again, if you choose that to conduct interviews of all three firms. But I would like to hear your comments on the, on the proposals prior to making that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Any comments, questions? Commissioner Douglas.
Just, I mean, as you look at these proposals, I mean, all of these firms have top-level staff, wide experience, you know, relevant experience. So my question, or kind of just big top-level questions, we see that both Clarion and ZoneCo, or ZoneCo, are using an, and ECO through 60, they talk about that, if platform is the right word, or system. And that is the system that we use now. Code, code, what is it, Code Studio talks about using a GIS system, so educate me, us about the differences and advantages, disadvantages thereof.
Well, we were asking for them to help us not just write a static zoning ordinance. And we were looking for them to help us develop an online, essentially online portal where people could view a map of different properties in the city, click on the map, find information, but also an AI element to it, which would allow them to not only find out what that property's address is, its size, but to extract the relevant components from the zoning ordinance specific to that site. And you're correct in that the two firms have identified and shown you their prior history of working with other clients on the ability to accomplish that, and have it integrate into the city's firm that we utilize to codify all of our ordinances. And there's the one firm that stands out a little different in that it's essentially a separate platform, if you will. I personally don't have any objection or concern with the, the separate platform, and I think that there is, is a way to, to integrate it into our existing ECO 360 piece of software at the end of the day. I had some very favorable reviews of that particular, that one set aside platform that you're referring to. I thought, based on my review, it seemed like it was capable of doing possibly more than the other two platforms. So I don't see it as a negative thing whatsoever.
Okay. And sort of apropos of that, I, and I will, I will point out that when we chose the firm to develop our master plan, one of, you know, when you're a hammer, every problem looks like a nail. I've spent my career in marketing, and so, and PR, and the thing that impresses me about Code Studio is that one of their, their partners in this is a marketing firm, very, you know, they all do community engagement, everybody does community engagement, but the fact that they have a partner that is specifically focused on that is an advantage to me. So, and they're the ones who, as you're saying, have what you think is maybe a more fluid capacity compared to the other two. So that might tip me in there, in that direction.
Well, and we'd certainly like to, if you decide to do interviews, we can ask them for more information on, on both of those topics and plenty of others.
Sure. I will say, if we do decide to do in-person interviews, I have plans on Wednesday the 10th, which could be changed with some difficulty.
We already have an agenda, I'm sorry to interrupt, but.
We already have an agenda for the 17th, don't we? Are we expecting it to be?
The 19th?
The 19th, I'm sorry.
That's your regularly scheduled agenda, and we are processing a few items.
So are we gonna be able to theoretically interview three parties in an hour?
Not with, no, not within an hour. So we're, we're processing two applications at this point. We've, we've given our initial comments to those two particular applicants, and we've given them a deadline as to when they need to provide us with modifications, corrections, et cetera, in order to, for them to continue to be, to be at a place on your December the 9th agenda. They may or may not get us information in time. We could set a special meeting in an earlier time as well. But I will say, if you do want to interview Clarion, they've identified that the only day they're available to come to town for an in-person interview would be December the 10th. I suppose you could add a twist and say, we want to do an interview with you on the 9th, it'll be virtual.
Wow. Or if we did it early enough on the 10th, I mean, theater tickets, okay?
You're allowed to have a life? We can do it earlier than that.
So if we do something at 6 o'clock, you know, I'm fine.
I think I reserved a room starting at 4 until 10.
There you go. So then, that.
You can, you can have the meeting at any time of the day you like, the room is available. WROK is available to livestream, broadcast, record our interviews as well.
Okay.
And to your question, Mr. Cooper, on our actual meeting day, Tuesday, we would only be interviewing one firm prior. So perhaps an hour is enough to get that one done prior to our regular meeting.
No, we could do two.
Yeah.
Code Studio's available on either date.
Right.
If that's the case, then I would just suggest that you have, on the Tuesday, we have a special meeting starting at 5:00.
Yeah.
So that we offer, affirm the opportunity for essentially a half an hour presentation and conversation, and then 15 minutes of packing up and moving on before we bring the next one in. So essentially an hour block. I think that's more than enough time.
That's sensible.
Ms. Mayor?
And I recommend that we're upfront in terms of what that structure's gonna look like, and we stick to that timeline. So if we have someone going over the presentation, we just cut them off at whatever. I mean, I think it's very important to give all the applicants a equal footing and in the same structure. So we don't want to all of a sudden say, oh, well, you presented for 45 minutes and we want to talk to you for a half hour. Not just the fact that it goes over, I don't mind, but, you know, if the other applicant would have gone 45 minutes, you know what I mean? Like, we just want to have the same rules for all the players and be strict about it and let them know.
Any other comments?
What does staff want?
Well, I think, personally, I think it's wise for the planning commission to determine whether you'd like to interview all three firms or a lesser number via just some general conversation to determine whether there's a consensus of that.
What do you want?
I think it's appropriate to interview all three of them.
There we go.
Answering my own question.
It's like pulling teeth here.
Well, then, it may, again, in the paper memorandum that's in front of you, there's a suggested motion. I would add the twist to it that be resolved that the Royal Oak Planning Commission will hold a special meeting on Tuesday, December the 9th, starting at 5:00 p.m. in the city commission chambers to interview the following firms based on their October 29th RFP response to the request to develop a new zoning ordinance, Zone Co. of Cincinnati, Ohio, and Code Studio of Austin, Texas. The subsequent motion would be changed to simply strike Code Studio from the end.
Mr. Cooper?
Just going through again, I think everybody's got a, got some pretty good horsepower bind, every, every group and facet. But questions I have with regards to pricing, as I was going through, it appears that everyone has a maintenance fee, an annual maintenance fee of $20,000 to $10,000 for maintaining the system. I did notice Clarion, however, doesn't have that listed, though they do have additional services for Code, which I think is going to be required. It looks like anywhere from $13,000 to $23,000.
And I fully anticipated that.
Yep.
And I see that as it's absolute necessity in order for us to continue to have a system that functions appropriately for staff and for the public, and to make sure we have the professional team behind us in order to help achieve that. So I don't see that as a concern.
Okay.
I've got a quick comment. I don't think it's a disqualifying comment. I did notice that admittedly, I've not done a deep dive into each proposal. I have looked at all three proposals. One of the things that did stand out was that Zone Co. has not done any projects in Michigan. And I don't necessarily see within their project spotlights that they've done, that they partnered on projects in Michigan even. So again, I don't think that should be disqualifying, but I did want to point out that it's a little bit of a concern just from the standpoint of knowing, obviously, our region is unique to the rest of the country. It stood out to me, probably about that.
Yeah, as we, as we also discovered with interviewing firms for the master plan, a firm may have a main office, they may have subsequent satellite locations, that may be somebody's house, it may be a traditional office. I'll say that Zone Co., while they're based out of, if I remember correctly, Cincinnati is the headquarters, there is a local individual that works for the firm who lives in Ferndale. So not to throw them a lifeline to what your comments were, but there is, there is a local presence in the fact that that one individual does live in Ferndale, work for Ferndale.
That's good to know. Just for the record, though, I was, I was referencing where they've actually done projects, and they seem to have a gap in Michigan. But I also support the notion of interviewing all three firms. I don't think it's appropriate to maybe disqualify one tonight. I'm in favor of actually talking to all three of them.
And I will add that the individual working with Zone Co. has been a planning leader in Michigan for 30 years and has done work here in the, in the city of Royal Oak, was part of the team that planned and implemented Centennial Commons, among other things. And I think they've done, well, in, with a previous firm, he did work in Centennial Commons, and I think he may have done work elsewhere in the city as well.
Okay.
So there's, there's boots on the ground.
I appreciate that context.
Yeah, I think you'll see some of that in, they, we required that they identify all their subconsultants. And some of that is them reaching out to Michigan firms that have a greater presence or history that may be able to assist them. Always good to have an outside vantage point, always good to have an inside game. So maybe that combination.
Yeah.
So is a motion required to?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So I will propose to make a motion to host interviews, as noted, for Tuesday, December 9th, 2025, starting at 5:00 p.m. for Zone Co. and Code Studio. And then Wednesday, December 10th, starting at 6:00 p.m. for Clarion. For in-person interviews.
Is there any other information you needs to?
No.
In this motion?
That's excellent.
Okay. Is there a second to Mr. Cooper's motion?
I'll second.
All right, second by Commissioner Douglas. So the motion is to have the planning commission hold a special meeting on Tuesday, December 9th, starting at 5:00 p.m. to interview Zone Co. of Cincinnati, Ohio, and Code Studio of Austin, Texas, as well as a special meeting on Wednesday, December 10th, starting at 6:00 p.m. to interview Clarion of Denver, Colorado. Seconded by Commissioner Douglas. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're interviewing some candidates. Good. Okay, item 5D, analysis of zoning ordinance provisions for maximum residential floor area. Mr. Murphy, the floor is yours. So you recently had a joint work session with the zoning board of appeals, and there were numerous zoning ordinance provisions that were referenced and discussed. But the conversation was dominated by one particular provision, which limits single-family homes to no, single-family houses to no greater than 3,500 square feet of usable floor area. And that provision was put in place in the zoning ordinance in 2007, but it has some origins that date back to the 1999 master plan process. So this memorandum that we'll go through is a timeline identifying the key steps in the creation of the ordinance. But the key point is that staff believes that a uniform application of an arbitrary maximum floor area for single-family houses should not be incorporated into the new zoning ordinance. So during the, a previous master plan process that started in the late 90s, there were very legitimate public concerns expressed with regard to new housing that was being built in established, existing, single-family neighborhoods. And in response, the 1990 mass, 1999 version of the master plan included a strategy, and I'm going to read the specifics here. "To establish design guidelines for new residential development and rehabilitation of existing residences which are compatible with the existing conditions, specific to density setbacks, building spacing, and rear and side garage locations." So just like we're doing now in 2001, after the creation of the master, adoption of the master plan, the planning commission embarked on creating a new zoning ordinance. And there was a provision that was included in the new zoning ordinance with regard to architecture and compatibility. I won't read it, but you can see it in the report. That ordinance had a tremendous amount of vagueness that provided challenging for determining compatibility. And staff realized that and provided some different options in 2005 to the planning commission to try and chart a different course. And those options are shown. I won't go through those because we didn't adopt any of those, but you can see the history, the detailed history on those that were suggested. And the planning commission didn't take any action at the time. There was a committee that was, that was formed to review all of those different options. But that committee did not come to a conclusion or a recommendation. In 2006, staff distributed a memorandum with three possible options to, related to the compatibility provisions. And those are listed, as shown in the memorandum. None of those were chosen. Move forward yet another year into 2007, and the planning commission continued to review this topic over several, a period of several months. And ultimately, the planning commission determined that a provision allowing for a maximum of 3,500 square feet of floor area should be applied uniformly to single-family homes in the one-family residential and the one-family residential large lot zoning districts, regardless of their lot size. So that's a critical component here, regardless of their lot size, both one-family and one-family residential large lot zoning districts. Now, that maximum square footage coincided with the provision in the building code, which requires at that threshold or that size of a single-family or a two-family structure, the building code under the state regulations requires a seal from a registered architect or engineer. And again, that was coincidental. Back in 2007, there were very few homes in the city that met or exceeded that threshold. And at the time, economic conditions and mortgage rates at that time, a new or modified structure that was 3,500 square feet in area was pretty rare. In 2014, the city commission did make a slight amendment to the ordinance, and we changed the definition from gross, 3,500 square feet of gross floor area to usable floor area. And we have a specific definition for usable floor area in that calculation. In 2020, just like you did several months ago, you had a joint work session with the zoning board of appeals. And one of the topics of discussion, discussion was that maximum permitted floor area for a single-family home, specifically in the one-family residential large lot zoning district. And thereafter, staff investigated current conditions, and we presented some data to you. There's a hyperlink in this memo. I'll bring it up for interest's sake. You may, some of you may or may not recall, we looked at all the properties in the one-family residential large lot zoning district. All of those are shown on the map on the screen in yellow. Those that have a red outline are ones that exceed, based on assessing square, calculation of square footage, they exceeded the 3,500 square feet. So as close of a proximity as we could come to what's out in the real world. But you'll see, we looked at particular segments of the city, and we determined of the, in this particular area, corner Rochester and 14 Mile Road, there are 83 properties, and only two of them were in excess of 3,500 square feet. We looked at another neighborhood, yet another one at 12 Mile and Woodward. And lastly, west of downtown, near Woodward, south of 11 Mile and Hendry, where you'll see that there were 19 properties with that zoning, in that zoning district, and eight of them exceed, at that time exceeded the 3,500 square feet. So background information for you was presented. The planning commission determined that at that point in time, 2021, that it was unnecessary at that time to consider an amendment to, to that ordinance provision. So fast forward to, again, September of this year, that topic came up again, and that's what initiated staff to take the liberty to create this memorandum in response to that discussion. So being proactive based on the conversation that occurred in that, that joint work session. We included for you a table which shows all of the variance requests to that maximum threshold of 3,500 square feet since its inception. So it was created in 2007. You'll see, based on this table, by year, how much of a waiver or so above and beyond 3,500 square feet they were seeking from the zoning board of appeals. The next column over shows whether it was to create a new home or whether it was an expansion of an existing home. The column to the right of it shows whether the zoning board of appeals granted or denied the request. And then to the far right, the last column illustrates whether the property was in the one-family, or OF in abbreviation, residential zoning district, or the one-family large lot zoning district. You'll see that we started off with few variance requests, and as we rolled into 2015 through 2016 and 17, that's the bulk of the variance requests that, that the zoning board of appeals considered to go above and beyond 3,500 square feet. It's just a point of reference. You'll see that it continues to be a variance request. It was very dominant last year, and it continues to be a variance request this year.
Yes. Those that were granted, were they granted carte blanche, or did the zoning board extract, negotiate some conditions? I mean, are these, are they just coming in and saying, we want this extra square footage, and the zoning board says yes or no? Or does the zoning board then negotiate elements of that?
I won't say the zoning board of appeals negotiates elements, but the zoning board of appeals, as they very well should, utilizes some strict criteria in order to determine whether to grant the variance. So they ask the petitioner point blank, why do you need this variance based on the criteria that we have? So they do make the petitioner demonstrate. Oftentimes, the petitioner, when they have conversation, sometimes the petitioner is asked to postpone the item, go back to the drawing board, and come back to them with a reduced variance request. That is, it is common. It's not a requirement. But I will say that the zoning board of appeals does a good job of making sure that they review all their criteria in determining whether it's appropriate. And you'll see that quite a few of them are based on that large lot residential zoning district. And that was one of the key comments that they brought to light in the 2020 work session, and then more recently, in September, the work session, was, was that they were asking you to look at minimally changing the threshold in the large lot zoning district.
And then further, so when these houses have come to the zoning board, is it just because of the size? Or are there other variances that they're looking for in addition to exceeding the 3,500 square feet?
Yeah, I don't think there's one-size-fits-all for that application. Most of them probably have several variance requests. There are probably few that is just 3,500 square feet.
Okay.
But, yeah, they vary, they vary.
All right, thanks.
So the original text in the zoning ordinance stated, and I want to read it really specific, "New dwellings should be a product of their own time, but incorporate design elements complementary to the primary architectural style of the neighborhood." That's purely aspirational. There is no quantifiable element to that statement. And so staff was left with the unenviable task. of trying to determine neighborhood boundaries and architectural compatibility based on existing building materials, colors, roof lines, window proportionality, et cetera. So many home styles fluctuate, and homes often, older homes often outlive their useful life and don't match modern demands. Prior ordinance provisions impacted residents, residents living in a one-story brick ranch in a subdivision full of one-story brick ranches, that they had the interest to construct a second-story addition to accommodate their growing family or a senior relative. And that ordinance provision presented some real challenges. Again, in 2007, 3,500 square feet of living space seemed pretty distant. Today, it's more commonplace, not completely commonplace, but more commonplace, given market demand created by lifestyles, mortgage rates, and simply return on investment, especially if someone's buying a piece of property to tear down an existing home and construct a new home for their family or for profit for sale. Every neighborhood in the city includes prominent home additions and new home construction. Numerous blocks now contain a significant or a higher percentage of new homes than original homes. I think that's really important. So it can be found everywhere throughout the city. And various city commissioners and school board members over the years have actively, actively taken steps to not only encourage new investment, but new families and school-aged children. I think that the city has really worked hard diligently and hard to create investment that begets more investment. So we believe, staff believes that pause should really be given to any ordinance restriction that limits the square footage of a house to match an existing single-family neighborhood condition. We believe that matching requirements could lead to stagnation and possible disinvestment in neighborhoods. So this is food for thought to keep in mind as we start to slowly head into creating a new zoning ordinance. It's intended to respond to the topic that was brought up at the joint work session, but to, to give you some raw data and some real considerations in history as to how we got here and what to consider in the future. And again, we're not asking you to make any decisions or propose any ordinance amendments tonight, just to keep this, all of this in mind as we move forward with one small tiny element of creating a new zoning ordinance.
Yeah, I think this is really interesting and really hits home. I won't say the exact quote, but you know it when you see it. And I think that is, you know, one of the issues when you go back to 1999 and all of that, you know, you could see something being built. It didn't look right, didn't feel right, seemed out of place. And you know it when you see it. How do you account for that? Do you account for it dimensionally? Do you account for it via setback? Do you count for it via square footage? Architectural design, I look at my neighborhood, you have houses that were built, you know, early 1900s all the way to, you know, actually in my street, probably to the 1990s. And so looking at what is architecture over a 150-year span? I, I don't know. You know, how do you, my house is very different than my next-door neighbor's house versus the house Kitty Gorder to me. Other neighborhoods are more uniform and have different, you know, if they were built post-war, the GI Homes and stuff you're talking about, Mr. Murphy, the ranch home, single-family, you know. I think, I think there's probably more of a case to say that there is some sort of architecture. You like, love it or hate it, you know, there's probably consistency. But I don't, I mean, this is really interesting because the more you try to layer in the rules, I don't think our community fits a cooker, cookie cutter community. We're diverse in everything that we do, and that's a strength of ours. And so I think trying to put some sort of uniform restrictions does create more complications and more problems than maybe it's trying to solve. But at the same time, you know it when you see it, right? So how do you, you know, what, what is the root of what people are trying to avoid? And I don't, I'm interested to hear what this board comes up with because I don't know that I have the answer.
Commissioner Douglas?
So the, this 3,500-square-foot business has been problematic and more recently, more problematic. Do we want to wait two years before we can finish a rezoning process? Or might we want to act, you know, quickly to just eliminate that requirement from the zoning and just base the, the limitations on floor area ratios? Is that what we're using, or lot coverage? I'm sorry, lot coverage, the 30% rule?
Smaller lots are allowed a greater lot coverage, yes. You're, you would simply be, and your interest is in the possibility of having an ordinance, ordinance amendment which simply strikes that language.
Yep.
I have something to say on that.
Well, real quick, I just want to jump in for a second because our discussion today is around the, the ordinance language related to the, the maximum size of the home. I was going to make some comments related to the lot coverage issue that you just brought up. But I think, I guess I want to make sure I'm understanding what's being presented to us right now in terms of for this discussion. And it's not necessarily related to lot coverage. It's really just related to square footage of home. Because one of the questions I do have, excuse me, frog in my throat. If you look at all the homes that requested the variance here, we've got the, the square footage of relief that they requested. We have the relative size or type of lot. What we don't have an indicator of, to your point, Commissioner Douglas, is were they also within our lot coverage in getting this relief? Or in getting this relief, did this also push them out of that lot coverage compliance? That's going to be a very telling tale in terms of this data and what it's really showing us. Because if, to your point, if, if we're predominantly staying within the lot covers that we've established based on the different lots, but there's, there's some lots that just have a, you know, a square footage relief that's needed, that's a pretty telling data point to me. If all of these homes that needed all of this square footage relief over the 3,500 foot also needed a relief for lot coverage, that's also very telling and might drive you to make a different decision or choice on what you want to do with the ordinance language. So I just wanted to bring that up because I was thinking about it in the sense that I was very curious as to which one of these also have that other component. But I also know that our discussion and all this data is related to simply the square footage. So, Mr. Mayor, I apologize.
Yes, and, and I think on that, not every lot is the same, right? Because square footage could mean it could be one foot by, you know, 20,000 feet. You know, what does that mean? It means nothing, right? So I think that the other interesting thing here is, how do you, how do you incorporate not just lot coverage? You know, if that's what we're going after, but in the larger lot neighborhoods, you know, your setbacks. Should your, should it be a formula that is, you know, the, the size of your lot is the percentage of your setback, which is the size of your, your structure? On top of it, you know, we do have height restrictions and all of that. And I, and I think, you know, sometimes it's the base footprint, not necessarily the entire footprint. So, you know, in some of these larger lots, you're saying, oh, it's 4,000 square feet, but it's really stacked in two stories. You know what I mean? And, and that might, you know, it's interesting because you could do 4,000 square feet that is all, you know, one floor, and that looks a little different than something stacked. So I think, I agree having an arbit, not arbitrary, but having a number of like 3,500 square feet. If you get rid of it, then what, when do we have these conversations? You know, what unintended consequences do we have? So I think, set it just getting rid of it, you have to have a replacement that helps maintain the character of every neighborhood. And I, I don't want it to be overly complicated, but we have three interviews we're doing next week. We could probably, you know, get some free insights as an interview question.
I'll just, excuse me, I'll add, so sorry. I'm not necessarily in favor of, you know, overly restrictive ordinances that, that quell good design. That being said, I think we do already have some of those in place already for, for good reasons. You, you mentioned setbacks. We have height restrictions. We do have other things in place that do help define the box that we think is reasonable for our, predominantly our sites in the city. But I do think we have to have very thoughtful conversation around what other constraints we want to place on that box in a way that doesn't, that doesn't impinge on simply good design. To your point, every lot is unique. And if you get a, you know, really good designer that's able to design a, a large home on a unique lot that fits well within the character of the neighborhood and fits within the, the box that we've defined, who are we to say that it shouldn't, you know, be that big or it needs to be smaller, whatever it may be? I think there's ways that we can define what the character that we want without necessarily being too oppressive on good design. Like form-based codes is an example of a tool that could be utilized. Any other comments, questions? Okay, so just so I'm clear though, this is, this presentation, Mr. Murphy, was essentially to arm us with information for us to think about tonight as we go to bed and wake up bright-eyed with fresh ideas, solving all the problems.
Precisely.
Okay.
I'll try, I'll try not to put you asleep right here, right now.
Okay. All right. So if there's no other discussion on this topic, we will move on in the agenda. Item 5D, analysis of the zoning ordinance provisions for maximum residential floor area. Mr. Murphy?
When we, when we embark on the development of a new zoning ordinance, adult-oriented land uses is certainly going to require some special attention. And this memorandum identifies what?
Sorry, we're on item, oh, I'm sorry, I, I said the wrong one. I apologize. We're on, on, on 5E, which is the analysis of the zoning ordinance provisions for adult uses.
Sure, we're good.
I mentioned the wrong one.
Yes, you're good.
My fault.
The, the bottom line upfront is what's shown in the bullet points of this, of this memo. So we'll go through those, and then we'll, we'll further elaborate on those as we go deeper into the memorandum. But as we get ready for the new zoning ordinance, the city and its selected consultant must, must with regard to adult-oriented land uses, we must research relevant and influential court cases and opinions and orders to help us craft a full understanding of our ordinance requirements with regard to those outcomes. We must also review current ordinance provisions and determine their appropriateness of all defined and undefined adult uses. You do identify ways to, at a minimum, accommodate for the practice of massage therapy, state-licensed body art facilities and pawn services as either a use-by-right or special land uses at select locations. And then where appropriate, we need to quantify the, the, quantify the level at which an establishment meets our definition of an adult use. And we need to ensure that distance requirements are not overly restrictive. Consider the timeliness of an application process, application and review process. And we need to ensure that decision-making criteria are limited to combating negative secondary effects. And lastly, we need to craft ordinance provisions that protect commercial free speech and due process rights all while safeguarding against legitimate, not perceived, undesirable secondary effects. And I want to repeat that one. So you don't fall asleep just yet. I'm going to repeat, we need to craft ordinance provisions that protect commercial free speech and due process rights while safeguarding against legitimate, not perceived secondary, undesirable secondary effects. So zoning ordinance requirements or land use regulations are legitimate means to regulate the type, location, and activity of adult-oriented commercial enterprises or businesses. Municipalities have, have the right to regulate potential undesirable secondary effects associated with particular land uses. But courts require that the regulations be narrowly tailored to serve a legitimate interest and not restrict free speech or due process rights. So that's our challenge to define the thresholds and practices to encompass, encompass businesses that have undesirable effects on neighborhoods and exclude those that do not. Not every business that's dealing with adult or sexually themed materials produces undesirable secondary effects. Some operate at a scale or a nature that doesn't meet a threshold of an adult-oriented business. Things like strict, strict background checks, licensing processes, annual inspections, reporting requirements, and criminal enforcement are far more effective tool in land use regulations at addressing any illicit activities that might occur at the site. In recent, the city was sued by a prospective adult retailer who alleged that the city's zoning ordinance provisions restricted their free speech and due process rights as guaranteed by the First and the Fourteenth Amendment of the Constitution. Specifically, that plaintiff alleged that the city's restrictions on adult-oriented businesses were overbroad and acted as prior restraint on their free speech. They alleged that the zoning ordinance provisions were void for vagueness, failed to provide judicial review, restricted speech, speech based on content, and were not narrowly tailored, and they failed to provide reasonable alternatives. So now is the time, as we're getting ready to modernize our zoning ordinance, to consider adult uses to ensure their continued compliance with ever-evolving constitutional standards. Current zoning ordinance provisions loosely define an adult-oriented commercial enterprise in three different ways. Retail businesses whose inventory consists of substantial or significant portion of sexually explicit material. Two, businesses involved with sexually explicit entertainment. And three, businesses providing services to consenting adults. So we're going to focus on retail. A retail establishment with a substantial or significant portion of its stock and sexually explicit material is defined in, under our ordinance as an adult bookstore or an adult retail store. Again, the words are substantial or significant portion. And that determination is certainly left to an individual judgment. A prospective business owner may have a very different percentage or share in mind compared to what the city staff or the public considers substantial or significant. Because these are not quantifiable elements in our zoning ordinance, similar language has been subject to constitutional challenge in other jurisdictions. And that's a concern to us. Massage, in 2009, the state of Michigan defined types and practice, the practice of massage therapy. And it also created regulations and a licensing structure for massage therapy professionals. These professionals must complete a supervised curriculum, pass a criminal background check, consent to a code of conduct, be in good standing, and have continuing education. The state health code requires that any one practicing massage therapy must be licensed by the state of Michigan. With the exception that there are numerous state-licensed healthcare professionals that are statutorily exempt from the massage therapy licensure requirements of the state. Massage therapy can be a primary or an ancillary business activity. They're often found as ancillary services, as you may well know, from hair salons, day spas, gyms, recovery facilities. They can be therapeutic in nature, or they can be medically prescribed. Body art facilities. In 2010, the state act that was created in 2010 provides that individuals shall not tattoo, brand, microblade, or perform body piercing without the facility that they're at being licensed by the, the state of Michigan. Technicians who perform those services or procedures, they're not required to have a license by the state, only the facility itself. The county health department, every county health department is involved in that review process at the state level. State-licensed physicians or dentists who provide, who utilize body art procedures as part of a patient treatment or other licensed healthcare professionals, they're exempt from that particular state act. But facilities and technicians that, and facilities and technicians that only provide ear piercing, they're exempt from that state act requirement. They're governed by an entirely different circumstance. Under the state act, body art facilities are a location at which a technician does one or more of the following activities. Again, it can be a primary activity, or it can be ancillary in nature. They can do tattoo, tattooing, which does include microblading, and we'll get into the definition of what that is. They can also perform body piercing or branding. Tattooing, as you may well know, is leaving an, leaving an indelible mark upon the body by inserting a pigment under the skin. Microblading is a semi-permanent makeup technique, and technicians use a very similar instrument to those. to those with performing tattoos, and they insert a series of tiny needles that insert pigment under the skin. Microblading is temporary in nature. It needs to be, we'll say, touched up periodically, but it's the exact, uses a similar instrument. And the state act does not distinguish between facilities that provide either tattooing services or microblading. They both get the same license from the state, and that entitles them to do either or both of those as a primary element of their business or an ancillary component. So we do not have, under the city's regulations, a way to allow for tattooing versus microblading. Again, when they get the license from the state, it allows, it entitles them to do one or the other or both. So microblading generally is often associated with people creating the presence of illusion of an eyebrow. I like to use the analogy, on the flip side of tattoo is that hideous thing on the side of Mike Tyson's face. Once you get a license from the state, you can do either or both of those. Body piercing, that's not as common of a land use that we see, but it is governed by the state act, as well as branding, which is burning with a hot iron or other instrument to make a permanent mark on a human tissue. Another adult use that we define in our ordinance are pawn shops, and those are individuals that broker loans associated with pawning items. Pawning, once again, can be a primary business activity, or it can be an extremely minor element of a jewelry store. Very commonplace to see that, as a very minor element of a jewelry store. Our current ordinance requirements for adult-oriented businesses require that they maintain, they have separation or distance requirements from particular types of land uses at particular distances. So we'll go through those. Adult businesses must be no less than 150 feet from a residential zone or a residential property. Need to be at least 1,000 feet from school, library, park, playground, licensed daycare, home, religious institution. And they certainly need to be another thousand feet from another adult business. So when we select a consultant, they must help us analyze the definition that we have and determine the appropriateness of an as, as a buy right or as a special land use in different districts based on the future land use map, different adult uses. The selected consultant must also help us analyze those existing distance requirements that I just referenced. And we need to determine whether those are overly restrictive or effectively prohibitive. Again, that's, I want to come back to that point. We need to determine whether these distance requirements are overly restrictive or effectively prohibitive. They can be construed as a prior restraint on free speech or overly complicated or time-consuming approval process, which should be structured to withstand potential due process challenges. And I included the actual definition of the ordinance for you. I will note that Mr. Markham was of extreme, was extremely helpful in providing insight and language and comments to this memorandum, so it couldn't have happened without Mr. Markham and the attorney's office, so I do want to extend some gratitude to them. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Ms. Murphy.
I have a question. Goes back to one of the first statements you made, which has always piqued my interest when it comes to adult-oriented businesses, because a lot of times, you know, folks will come with the microblading and the tattoo parlors, and I'm not aware of seedy and secondary, what do we call it, secondary undesirable?
Undesirable secondary effects.
Effects, whatever that means. And, you know, massages, I think about, you know, my wife and her girlfriends getting a massage. I'm like, okay, I guess maybe I didn't understand fully what is entailed in a massage. Back, the ones I had back in the day were very targeting, quadricep or something like that, you know what I mean? Very technical, so. But, I mean, is there any data or anything out there? Because it seems like you have some people that have this perception. I know we had a former city commissioner that comes up here and talks about the Japanese sauna, and I mean, almost makes the hair stand up on your neck, like, oh my God, what's going on? But then there's perspective, let's say, that, you know, most normal people have, you know, you go to massage for either for therapy, prescription, or whatever, and we're making these businesses almost, you know, a huge barrier to entry into providing services that people want. So where do we get that data and how do we define what a secondary effect is? Because it's all perspective, right? And you're saying data has to be, definition and data have to be at the center of it. So if we have opinions that say tattoo parlors are attracting, you know, a lot of crime and using up police resources and whatever, okay. Is there a way to define it? Like, how do we define it and how do we measure it and how can we get that in terms of our, as we start to look at these zoning decisions?
That's a heavy lift for whoever we hire as a zoning ordinance, to help us with the zoning ordinance, and their subconsultant, that legal team, is going to have to provide us with some of that documentation so that you can make a very sound, judicious decision on how we move forward.
Any other questions for Mr. Murphy? See Commissioner Douglas writing furiously. You form me a question?
Nope.
Okay.
I'm hoping the printed ordinance here didn't jog her memory or something. She's taking notes.
Quite a bit of language in there. Was this helpful to have an understanding of where we're at and the concerns that we have and where we believe that we should be headed?
Yeah. I think especially the, you know, we've seen this with signs, especially up here and over the years, in terms of what you can prohibit, what you can't. Can't read a sign. I think the idea of where free speech is going in this country, what's constitutionally protected, everything from Citizens United to, you know, what you can read on a sign, I think is really interesting and, you know, making sure that we're not opening ourselves up to lawsuits, we're being fair to people and businesses, at the same time protecting our community against unwanted, secondary, undesirable effects.
I have a question with regards to some of the previous litigation that you had mentioned that sort of challenged the language, and I'm assuming it's all a public record. Do we know what the outcomes of the litigation in the past has been in terms of, has it clearly demonstrated that there is, there's liability within the language, the way that it's written, or in its current state, while it may be weak, it stood up to those legal challenges? Do we have a sense of?
I don't recall the outcome of that particular.
It was just one?
The one that's referenced, that's the one that comes to mind. I don't, maybe Mr. Markham has some general comments.
There have been several different lawsuits statewide that have delved into stuff like this, and a lot of times, it's just simply the statute being so overbroad, it essentially gives staff unfettered discretion to approve or deny at their will, which tends to be a big problem. But some of the, and I'm blanking on specifically where it was, it was out west, almost on the coast, but some of the language on those are fairly similar to some that we have. There's some nuanced differences, and I don't want to go into specifically, but there's some problems due process-wise when it comes to presuming criminal activity in an ordinance itself.
Sure. Thank you. Anyone else with comments, questions? Again, this is a non-action item, information only. Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to item 5F, which is our non-action items. I guess no action, but Mr. Murphy, if you want to speak to the answer?
There's a report, quarterly report from the Road Commission for Oakland County, and that'll put you asleep. And then there's a quarterly summary of building permit applications that our office has provided administrative approval to, and we simply provide that for your general information.
Great, thank you. Okay, anything else for the betterment of our community? I have one item, if no one else has anything. I just want to share with the group that I had an opportunity to go to the Michigan Association of Planning Conference, what was that, two weeks ago now?
Yes.
Got to spend quite a bit of time with Mr. Murphy and Mr. Hedges. It was my first time going to the conference. I was very grateful that I had the opportunity to go. One, just to see how many other cities within our state are oftentimes struggling with the same challenges that we are, whether it be a master plan issue or how to create more housing, affordable housing, whatever it may be. You really get a sense of, you know, how big and broad some of these issues are and that we're not the only community struggling with it. So I was grateful for that. But I also learned quite a bit and was able to go to seminars that spoke about, while we don't have the ability to do community solar in the state of Michigan from a legislative perspective, there was about a half a dozen projects that came up with some really unique workarounds on how cities were engaged with their community and created opportunities for the community to get involved in community solar projects, all the way through learning about how to think about PUDs in a different way and how they can benefit your community in the ways that you want them to, maybe differently than they have been. I think we've been struggling with that here. And then also, we had a really unique presentation specifically related to affordable housing, but it was a very unique project where they actually, there was a nonprofit that had partnered with a local faith organization that was struggling financially, but they had the facilities, they had volunteer staff, they had capacity, they just were losing parishioners and were struggling with funding. There was a unique partnership that came out of that, where an affordable housing organization was able to purchase that facility from the faith-based organization, allowed them to continue to be a tenant in that building, so it still allowed a space for parishioners to come and pray. But they also were able to modify that facility so that it also provided short-term housing for families specifically. And it was a very interesting presentation in the sense that a lot of short, and I didn't realize this, a lot of short-term housing facilities that exist today, part of their protocols is to separate the father and the family, and so the mother and the children are maybe taken in, and the father is not allowed to come with them, and that is very disruptive, as you can imagine. So this particular facility, they have a different take. They were able to utilize the unique partnership and existing structure, adaptive reuse, very sustainable, but create a situation where families now could stay together, find a home, get some stability for a little bit of time, and just really sort of, you know, showed our unique way that if you have the right organizations and the right people with the right passion, you can solve some unique challenges. So I guess I'll stop with that. Just want to say, I highly recommend, if anyone gets an opportunity to go to this conference, please do. I hope we get to go again next year. I learned quite a bit, and I hope to bring as much of that back to this community as I possibly can. So, Mr. Murphy, did you want to highlight anything else about the conference?
I'll quickly say, and this will make Josh smile. As always, my favorite session is the legal session. I learned so much from that, and that is unquestionably my favorite and most productive, and so I love that one. I wish it was nothing but that.
All right, if there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Mr. Cooper, second. Back to Commissioner Douglas. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we adjourn. Thank you, guys.[1687.24]